You good? Awesome. I'd like to call to order the Hollis Brookline Cooperative School Board meeting. It's Wednesday, December 11th. Just briefly, just go around the circle and say who you are for the viewing public at home. Starting with Mr. Barnes, because Chris is still getting settled.
Oh, okay. Rick Barnes, Principal of Hollis Brookline High School.
Tim Gerson, Principal of Hollis Brookline Middle School.
Beth Williams, School Board.
Tom Solow, School Board Member.
Holly Durlough Babcock, School Board Member.
And Chairwoman.
Andy Corey, Superintendent.
Bob Thompson, Assistant Superintendent for Student Services.
Linda Sherwood, the Assistant Business Administrator for SIU.
Krista Whalen, School Board.
Great, thank you very much. I need a process observer. Is there any volunteers for that? Need a volunteer.
Clearly, I'm still in process. I've got myself ready, so I don't know if I'd be the guest bus.
Can you do it, Krista, though?
Yes.
Can you do it? Great, thanks. I mean, you can ignore the next two seconds of process. We'll figure it out. Agenda adjustments, we have a couple, so go ahead.
Yeah, first, I'd like to move the deliberation, Part One deliberations up for the date of the meeting for apportionment. And then, right after that, I'd like to allow our town moderator Drew Mason, who's here tonight, to give some comments about the apportionment meeting. And then, we could open that up to the regular public comment after that.
Right, so Drew goes first, and then public input after that.
Right. And then, the other piece is more of a flexibility item. Our Assistant Superintendent Gina Bereskog is over at her children's concert tonight. She believes she'll be here around seven, so if we could just move up to principal's report and discussion, and then Gina Rice will do the presentation on SEL.
Sounds like a plan. Is there any objection to that yet?
I appreciate the promotion, but I actually have to run and get elected to be town moderator. I'm just...
Oh, sorry. You are the Hollis Brookline Cooperative School District Moderator.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we'll make that change. Okay, so if there are no objections to that, we'll move forward with those agendas. Do we need to vote on that, or is... No, okay, great. All right, agenda adjustments made. Minutes. Let's see what we've got here. So, I need a motion to accept with the following amendments. Page of the... These are for the school board minutes from November 13th, 2019. So, page 13, line 26, delete that before those. And page 13, line 47, delete not before it. I don't think there are any other changes, so I need a motion to accept as amended.
So moved.
That's Tom, seconded by...
Second.
All those in favor? Are there any discussion on that? All those in favor? This is Annie, right? Thank you. Okay, and then we had some non-public minutes from November 13th, 2019, with no amendments, so I need a motion to accept as presented. That's Tom.
Second.
Seconded by Beth. All those in favor? Four zero. Great. And then, we had a special meeting of the Cooperative School Board and the Budget Committee Joint Meeting on November 7th. We have the following amendments. Page one, line 22 and 24, Matt McGuire should be listed as School Board Secretary. Page three, line 21, correct the spelling of terms. And page six, line 18, correct the spelling of little. So, I need a motion to accept as amended.
So moved.
By Tom, seconded by Beth. There's no discussion, I assume, so all those in favor? Four zero, great. All right, and at this point, we need nominations, designations, retirements, and correspondence.
I have a retirement for the board tonight. I've been educated since 1977 in varying roles with students from preschoolers to graduate level education. I did not begin to work with high school students until three years ago. I was nervous about this change. I was not certain that I would be the best fit for students at this level. My daughter provided me with encouragement, and she was right. I loved working at Hollis Brookline High School with high schools. They have been respectful and appreciative of my assistance. I like to think of everyone who comes into room 370 as an extended family or community. We care about each other, students and staff alike. My students gave me the nickname Mama Madden, and this has made me feel valued. It is with sadness that I am tendering my retirement, effective in June 2020. I do this with a heavy heart, as I still love teaching and hopefully make a difference in the lives of students. I sincerely appreciate the opportunity to have worked in the Hollis Brookline community for these 20 years. Thank you for your time. Respectfully, Melanie Madden.
Okay, so... Okay, so Liz Brown arrival at 6:06 PM. Thank you. So, I need to... A motion by a member to accept the resignation of Melanie Madden?
Retirement.
Retirement, sorry, thank you. To accept the letter of intent to retire from Melanie Madden.
So moved.
So moved by Tom, seconded by Beth. Is there any discussion? I just want to comment that that's a lovely letter, and that will... She'll be missed, I'm sure, by many of her students. All those in favor? Five zero.
That's it for nominations, resignations, and correspondence.
Great. I do want to mention that the board has received some comments and correspondence regarding some social and emotional learning, and we'll be addressing some things later on related to that, so, great. All right. Next, deliberations, Part One, is that where we are?
Correct.
Okay, let me find that. So, we need to see what action the board will take regarding setting a date for the special meeting for apportionment. Although we set a date already, we're doing a revote, I guess, is what you would call it, right?
Correct. We had originally gone with Tuesday, January 28th, and then we realized that the Chair of the Budget Committee was unable to attend due to a work commitment. And we all felt strongly that with her involvement in apportionment and the budget overall for these past many years, that was important. So what we're proposing is to just move that to Wednesday, January 29th, for our official date. Once we have set the date, our attorney will put together all the requirements of the public hearing and all those items. So that's what we're asking the board tonight.
Okay, so I need a motion to set the date for the special meeting for apportionment as January 29th, 2020.
So moved.
Moved by Liz.
Second.
Seconded by Krista. Is there any discussion or comment on that? I feel like you're looking at your calendar. You good?
What's the backup date?
The snow date is Thursday.
Thursday. The Thursday. The snow date was set already, so this is just a change in the date.
It was Tuesday before that?
It was Tuesday before.
We're going to go Tuesday, Thursday, now, or Wednesday?
Or Wednesday, Thursday. Okay. Any other comments? All right, all those in favor? Five zero. Okay. At this point in the meeting, I'd like to open the floor for public input. First, we'll hear from our Hollis Brookline Cooperative District Moderator Drew Mason. But before you speak, Drew, let me just kind of go over public input. Drew's going to have an opportunity to speak to us for whatever amount of time he needs to speak to us. But in general, public input, which will follow Drew's comments, is a time for us to hear from the community. We would like you to state your name and address for the record, and keep your comments to two minutes, just out of respect for our time. So, thanks, Drew, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I'm Drew Mason, Baxter Road Hollis, and moderator of the district. I appreciated last year when we had a session with the school board and the Budget Committee to talk about the upcoming annual meeting, and so I wanted to get... do a little bit of dialogue, because this is likely to be another fraught meeting. So, do we know what time you wish to propose? Has that been set?
We have... For which meeting?
For the apportionment.
This is all on the apportionment meeting.
So, this is... The focus of tonight's comments are the apportionment, this January 29th meeting?
Yes.
Historically, we've started that meeting at 6:30.
Okay, I mean, I'm good with 6:30, but I have a small army of people to organize, so...
Does that work for your staff, though?
Yes.
Okay.
The only thing I'll say is that for the meetings where we had the public coming, unless we're really up against the law as far as the length of it, seven has got better attendance.
I'm just using the time we've used the last couple of years, and that was, I think, because we had, I'll say, lengthy meetings regarding bond votes and things like that, where we only have the one agenda item. I would think seven would work just fine.
Right, I think last year, we moved the meeting to 6:30 because the meetings the year before had gone so late.
Right.
So, what's the sense of the board? Do you feel like this is going to be something that's going to take hours to accomplish? I mean, it could, but...
We're going to be there for a while, so I don't know that it makes that much difference if you start at 6:30 or 7:00. I think that I would rather start earlier, because that allows the moderator to get out the instructions and hopefully all of those things that we should be accustomed to, and then still be able to start getting into discussion, because I think there's going to be a long line at the podium that night, and I'd like to be out of there before midnight, and not be using the snow day as a second night. Because it just becomes hard to get people to come in to vote when they're doing that.
You have to go over the rules. You know, we have to, you know, do some introduction things, and then there will be a presentation. So, I think that starting at 6:30 is probably prudent.
I don't have a strong feeling, I just...
Right.
6:30 has not been...
Been our tradition, right. I understand. But we're trying to change the tradition a little bit, because we're trying to move things a little earlier, so...
Yeah, because it seems like we're getting into those two- or three-day meetings, and so we're attempting to do rid of that a little bit.
So, thanks for the question. 6:30 sounds like the... If that works for your staff...
That works for us, but it is the school board's decision.
I don't think we have to vote on that, but yeah.
I do plan to wind up with a ballot vote. I would like your advice, but my thinking is to make it a one-hour vote, simply because a number of parents will be involved, and if you live at the far ends of one of the towns, it's going to take the parent who's there to vote, go home, change, and vote again, so...
So, you have the discretion to decide whether it's an hour, or whether it's just till the room finishes?
Right, it's not a statutory issue on this ballot.
I say hour sounds good to me.
Okay.
But everybody else? Anyone else? Hour's good.
Okay. Let's see, the school board, as always, is responsible for the warrant. Who's responsible to post it?
My office.
Okay. I'm going to insist on this, but you're supposed to provide the clerk with a sworn certificate of where and when you posted it. But that has to be provided by the time of the start of the meeting. You mentioned the rules, and that's a good question. I thought it was helpful to have the rules in the annual report, so we didn't have to go over many of them. I just went over the ones that I really had to go over, and the ones that might have been different. Now, we won't have an annual report, but it strikes me that there are a couple of things we could do. One is refer back to the annual report. I have made some changes in terms of my thinking. The other... Another is we could post the rules on the website, and another is we could have copies in the room. It saved 15 or 20 minutes, I thought, at the annual meeting.
I think so, too. Would you check with the Town of Hollis as to whether or not they would also be willing... We're going to post them on the website. To email them out to those notice groups that they have, that they've been sending alerts to? I just think it's one other way of trying to disseminate that information. Pardon?
Does Brookline have that, too?
I don't know. I imagine they have some sort of... Use whatever channels that we can use from the town, if they are willing to assist... Both towns, if they're willing to assist us in disseminating that information. Including, you know, Alert Now, if we can send it out, the rules. Just, I think we want people to under... We want to make sure that it's transparent, how the voting process is going to work. We also don't want to lose 45 minutes that night communicating that information.
So, you'd like... I think posting it on our website is definitely something to be done, asking the towns to push forward copies of the rules in the room. Can we do that?
Yeah, I mean, you just have to print them and put them in a stack somewhere, post a copy in the back of the room.
Yeah, if Drew, you give me the copy of the rules, we'll get a copy made.
Okay, and I expect these will be the same ones that will go into the town reports this coming year. I have made some changes based on my experience last year, but... It sounded like you're going to have a public hearing, but you haven't figured out when yet.
We're working on that, right, with the lawyer.
Okay. All right. Do you want... Andy, do you want me to talk with the Town of Hollis and Brookline, or did you want to do that?
You want to split it, you take Hollis, I'll take Brookline?
Okay.
Okay.
That's fine. I don't know whether they'll be cooperative or not, but we can always ask.
Right.
We're a cooperative district.
Yeah, we are a cooperative district, and we cooperate.
I'm assuming 10 minutes for the whatever school board, Budget Committee presentation is going to be made.
I want to check with Darlene on that, so I'll get... Can I get back to you with a little bit more... Can I get back to you with more of a specific answer, so you can be prepared for it? But I think I need to check with her, because she's probably going to be one of the primary presenters.
Probably.
Only Darlene can explain apportionment the way Darlene can explain it.
One for me, one for you. Two for me, two for you. Three for me, one for you.
Do you want to go the other direction and say that your goal is to have it not more than 10 minutes?
Well, that's where I'm trying to go, but it's my hope that the public hearing will be able to explain what apportionment is, and then what this proposal is. I recognize that the public hearing can be relatively lightly attended.
Really?
Do we tape those and post those?
We tape them.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're not sure if they're hot ticket items.
But all of them are posted in the archive, right? Yeah.
They're available.
Yeah, I mean...
I think it's fair to make this request that they need kept to 10 minutes. We did that for the district meeting, and even the budget fell within that.
Well, I'm going to say when... Gina and I did it last time, it took 15 to 20.
Should do apportionment?
Yep. We did it together.
Unlike SB 2...
We have a lot of slides.
Unlike SB 2, that comes up every year, and people... This is a once-in-a-five-year, and there's probably a lot of changeover in the voters since last time.
I'd like to give Darlene a little more leeway than 10 minutes, I think.
I think Ken's tight.
Darlene and the group who's presenting...
Darlene doesn't do it.
She doesn't do it, right? We do, right?
The school board does.
So... But I think a lot of the slides are going to come from the work with her, so...
Krista, you presented before. Do you think this is something that you're...
I was saying we need 15 to 20 minutes, at least, for the presentation.
I agree, and because I think it may be longer than last time, because we may need to explain the background from what happened last time, as to why we don't... Didn't have a separate extensive, you know, study done this time. I think there could be another five...
I think we're going to need 15 minutes.
I think she's saying 20 to 25, and I think...
No, she's saying 15 to 20, and I'm saying...
Is what we did last time, but if we have to add on to that. I would say 20 to make a save.
Sounds like the push...
Well, suppose you divided it. Suppose you had one simply on what apportionment is, without any advocacy either way. And then, you had a separate presentation by a different person about what this proposal is and where it comes from.
But I still think it's going to take 20 minutes.
But that's two separate presentations.
I think that separate... Second presentation's a 20-minute presentation. I think the first presentation's at least a five-minute presentation.
What's your goal, Drew? Is it to have... Just how to lay out the agenda for the meeting?
Well, that's the secondary goal. The primary goal is to give the voters enough information, but not too much, because we want to... All want to be out at a reasonable amount of time, and I would guess there's a significant number of people who have already made up their minds, but there are a significant number of people who have never heard of apportionment and said, "You're voting on what?"
I think it sounds like you can just block out... Block out 20 to 25 minutes for presentations, however they choose to get configured.
We'll figure it out.
People will be comfortable with that block, and if we can do it in less, great.
There may be alternative proposals as well.
Absolutely. I mean, we are aware.
Okay, and those would come to you, right?
Those would come to me, and they would get the 10 minutes.
But from the standpoint of the school board...
Yeah.
If you can block out 20 to 25 minutes for communication upfront, that would be appreciated.
And I see... So, it would... We could break it into what is apportionment, and a description of that as one part of the presentation, and then the proposal as another, so that we are... I can see what you're trying to say, yeah.
We had a pretty decent outline for it right now, so I...
But maybe with two separate people.
Yeah, what he's trying to do is get it so that the things that's speaking for a specific proposal are kept within a framework, so that if all three of the proposals come in, they have the same restrictions, guidelines.
Right, I got you. So, I see what you're saying. So, give us 20 to 25 minutes to play with, and we will keep in mind that alternative proposals will be given 10 minutes, and so we'll try to stay within that as well.
Okay. Just thinking how a new voter in the district who's never heard of a cooperative is trying to understand what all the furor is about.
And that's why we need time to explain the process and explain what apportionment is. We need time to do that. And so, tell you, we're going to do it in 10 minutes, and then to actually take 20 to 25 would be unfair. So, I don't want to shortchange us, so...
Yeah.
But we hear what you're saying, because there will be alternative proposals, and we don't want to spend 25 minutes just on our proposal, and then, you know, shortchanging alternative proposals. I understand.
Because there could be any number of alternative proposals.
Right, so we'll shoot for 20 to 25 minutes, and we'll work on that.
If that is not a... If you just can't do it, you know, talk to me, because this is all...
I see you a lot.
Do the alternatives come up if there's an amendment? Or do the alternatives... We present our... We present our presentations, and if someone comes up and says, "I'd like to make an amendment" and a presentation, is that how it comes up? Or do we do our presentation, and then people say, "Well, I want to make a presentation, I want to make a presentation, I want to make a presentation"?
Well, longer than the two minutes has to be by prior arrangement, in any case, so I would know they're coming.
Right.
But in terms of... To answer your question, I don't know yet. I don't know how many are going to come forward, and I'm trying to guess, or trying to figure out what's the right way. I mean, if I were being a stickler for rules, yes, you should have to make an amendment and then do the presentation.
That's what I'm trying to understand.
But I can see people pitch presentations any number of ways. We present ours, and then basically, a presentation could be canned that you should vote no against the warrant, because really, it should be 100% ADM. And the next one could be 100% EV. And those presentations could either be in favor of a amendment, or they could be for or against the warrant that's there. I mean, I just... I think there's going to be people with canned presentations, and how they get played out that night.
Right.
So, I see what you're saying.
Sorry. I mean, I just think I can organize that.
That's why I think you're saying show what apportionment is, one presentation, what the formula is, second presentation.
Right.
Exactly.
I'm catching on. He's been thinking.
I kind of want the discussion to not... You know, I make an amendment for blah, blah, blah. I would like the discussion to be able to be on the whole thing.
Right.
You know, "I don't like that, I like this instead." And eventually, we will settle on a proposal that the voters can approve.
Great. So, we answered your question on that?
I believe you did.
Okay, great.
As I'm sure you all know, the proposal, the legislation to allow the board to... Or the district to keep the same formula failed.
Right.
So, you know, unfortunately, I was hoping that... Any questions for me? I'm done with my list.
You think so? Anyone else?
I just want to express my sincere appreciation for the time and effort that you put in to making sure that the co-op meetings go smoothly. It is a huge effort, and I don't think we always express our appreciation. And I think some of the public expresses a whole lot of other things that are not appreciation, but I think the people at this table understand how hard you're working, and the fact that you're showing up before Christmas to talk about something that's six weeks away really shows your effort. I just want to make sure that we acknowledge that publicly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well said, Liz. Thanks, Drew. Thank you. Okay. Public input on other topics on our agenda.
Hello, I'm Tiffany. Can you hear that? Yeah. 101 Moore Hill Road, Hollis. I don't know... Tiffany Testa, yes. I don't know how these glasses will work. I need them to see you, but now I can't see down, so... I'm here to make a statement in support of initiatives that have us address school culture, climate, and social and emotional learning. You will see a presentation soon, or maybe not so soon, but I wanted to come and support this initiative and talk a little bit about the importance. I am an educator that has 20... Over 20 years of experience in school reform and change, but more importantly, I'm an advocate for all of our students here in the town, and I am also a parent. So, that's kind of how I'm coming to you. The first point that I want to make is that we are all aware of the issues that are concerning us in our schools, and it's not just our school district, but all around. We are very aware of the increasing rates in concerning behaviors. We're aware of intolerance and important issues. And everywhere you look, the solution points to social and emotional learning. So, that's the number-one solution that they're saying. So, when we're talking about anxiety, and suicide, and intolerance, and racism, and violence, and school shootings, and all of these things that we, too, realize we're not immune to here in our community, research tells us it's social and emotional learning. But I want to talk a little bit differently than just about social and emotional learning, because I think it's a comprehensive package that needs to be looked at. So, this isn't new information, and that's probably really important to be stated. And so, even though it might be a buzzword in our district now, and even though it might be something that we're looking at now, it's over 20 years that there's been a shift in the paradigm in education that social and emotional learning at the bedrock of every student's needs in terms of their learning. And right now, the best practice is that there is an adult in each building that knows a student well. And so, that's probably really important to know, because if you look at your schools and you can't say that there is, then you have to make changes. Because what they're saying now is that it's building of relationships between the adults, and the students, and the students, and each other, and the building of community that helps learners. I want to dispel something really important that I know will always be a pushback to things like advisory, and tending to culture, and community, and social and emotional learning, and that is that it takes away from academics. The number-one thing, we can't waste our time on that. That's not... You know, we've got this to teach, and math, and this and that. What you need to know though is that these things are not separate from curriculum and learning, but are absolutely paramount. You will find all over that until you have social and emotional learning, students can't learn. So, that's important to know. The other thing that I want to talk about is that this is not, I think, I think public schools and public education tends to be very reactive, but I'm asking us to not be reactive even though we might look at this in reaction to these issues. But this has been here for a long time and I would even force to be critical of, of ourselves and say, "When has this come up before and what did we do before about it? What were some of the things that we decided before? Or did we decide to take action?" Because when you look at our history, yep, I will, I've got two more things. When you look at our history of that, it informs us of how we should maybe behave in the future. The last thing I want to mention is something that is probably a new idea of looking at this or maybe not, but I want to look at the, the model of RTI and for those of you that aren't aware, that is response to intervention. And so, when you think about a district that doesn't have things in place already, you're looking at a tier three intervention. So, you're looking at when it's become already a heightened and intense intervention. You don't know the kid at all and then all of a sudden, you're having to deal with these issues. So, if we, I'll be, 30 more seconds. If we were to consider the social and emotional learning and the school climate and culture and things like advisory, that's tier one and tier two. And we all know that when you have those interventions in place, you don't really need as much of the tier three. So, I, I would urge this board to not only support, but insist on this initiative and, and do whatever it takes to, to help our kids.
Thank you. Thanks for that input.
Good evening, Madam Chair. I may not be familiar to many of you around the table, so I'm going to introduce myself. My name is Dr. Marie Ramos. I live on 9 Colbert Lane in Hollis. I am a family physician that works very closely with at-risk communities within Nashua and I take care of, of many underinsured and underrepresented populations. I'm also a former Board of Director member of the American Academy of Family Physicians. And so, I bring to you a little, some expertise and some objective information regarding the importance of social emotional learning and wanted to extend some of my level of knowledge and here, and understanding. With my work that I, and my currently position working with the Board of the Endowment for Health for the state of New Hampshire, I can tell you guys that the heightened concern as far as intolerance and heightened issues regarding anxiety and depression and other 504 level issues with behavior within students is not isolated within our community. But I wanted to extend as well, as a mother of a new middle schooler, it is of utmost importance for me to make sure that we are within a community and a school that is not only dedicated to academic excellence, but also is dedicated to creating leaders. It is a motto within my, my home that we say, "Successful people plan for success." And I am very much a believer that successful communities and schools plan for success. And research definitely supports that successful leaders are not only intelligently intellectual, but emotionally and as well socially intellectual. And so, we need to make sure that as a school system and as a school board, that we are keeping in priority not only the academic excellence, which we all know Hollis Brookline has, but also the emotional and social intelligence, IQ. Throughout our American culture right now, we're needing to see more leaders that are being developed and we need to be able to implement that are evidence-based opportunities and programs that are doing such. The governor just signed actually recent legislation to encourage an actual model for developing social emotional support. And that is because it's evidence-based and that's also because we're seeing that, that witnessing even on TV and on social media, traumatic incidences heightens a level of trauma that impacts a, a young child's or student's frontal lobe development. There's my son right there. I'll be right there, son. So, we have to understand, and I know that you all know as educators, that within middle school, this is the quintessential time when they are developing their capacity to be leaders and capacity for understanding how to make judgment calls. And unfortunately, when I first started medicine, and I'll be done in 30 seconds, when I first started medicine, we called adolescents from age 12 to 18. And now, because of all of the impact of social media and, and screen time and less interaction within community settings, we now know that our kids are not developing their frontal cortex and that higher level of understanding and knowledge of self until they're 26. So, I'm stuck with him until 26 to figure out how to become a leader. So, I have a wealth of information, if the board so pleases to, to request, of evidence-based materials from both the family physician perspective on a national level and why we support objectives on bullying, social, social awareness and social activity, both along with the family physicians and the Academy of Pediatrics, but more importantly, as a concerned citizen and as a mother of not one, but three children within this community, I want to make sure that Hollis Brookline is setting a trend within the United, within the state of New Hampshire. And this is definitely on the pulse, not only of the governor, but it's also on the pulse of higher-ups within the state. So, I appreciate you taking the time to look into this and I strongly encourage the board to make a great forward and stand forward to make a plan on how we're going to create not only healthy and academically intelligent kids, but also proactive and impactful legacy leaders for our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Charity Bell. I'm at 25 Forbes Street in Hollis. I'm a mom to a fifth grader. I'm a foster parent to over 150 children. I'm the Director of Training for the Department of Mental Health in Massachusetts for the northeast area, a trauma responder. I respond to suicides, bullying and violence in schools throughout Massachusetts. And I'm a speaker and consultant on trauma, social emotional learning, mindfulness and adult self-care to schools throughout New England as well as throughout the country. Social and emotional learning is more important than ever. We are in the midst of time where increasing rates of depression, anxiety and suicide are beyond anything we've ever seen before in the profession and they're reaching into younger and younger ages. In the past year, I've responded to suicides of children as young as 10 or nine in the public schools. I'm in the midst of a speaking tour on a topic called Parenting in Unparalleled Times. I've spent the past five years doing research into some of the ways in which society, education and technology have changed the manner in which our youth experience the world. What seems absolutely clear is that we are not doing enough to equip our youth, even as we educate them more aggressively than ever. Our kids are not equipped to deal with the social and emotional impacts of the world they currently experience. Hollis Brookline is a leader in many areas. Unfortunately, this is not necessarily one of them. I've become a de facto consultant to many parents in the community. I receive at least one email or phone call a week from a parent whose child is struggling within the schools due to bullying, anxiety or other issues. And unfortunately, at this point, there are many great mini programs and small interventions that are happening or piecemeal projects, but there doesn't seem to be an overarching framework for social and emotional learning that includes guidance as opposed to discipline and other educational supports around the long-term. I'm willing to put my money where my mouth is, not just as a taxpayer. My daily rate that schools, again, throughout the country pay me is $2,000 a day. I'm willing to donate five days a year for the next three years, once we decide to take up this kind of framework, to provide any sort of support that would be useful. I can't emphasize enough that we are not going to raise children who are successful unless we dedicate not just our time, but also our financial supports to this kind of learning. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Charity. Anyone else? Thank you for coming. We will, as a board, kind of talk a little bit about this after we see the social and emotional learning presentation that was, is going to be put on in a, in a little bit, but before, any, any other public? Before we do that, we're going to have our principals report. So, let's start with you guys. Oh, I'm sorry. Sure. Would you like to do that? I think that we have a student on her way as well, Annie. So, would you like to wait for, I think Mary's on her way. So, why don't we start with principals and just don't let me forget to ask. Let me scroll down to who, whose, whose principal's report is first in my packet. Mr. Grisone. You get to go first.
Thank you, Holly. I would just like to highlight a couple notes in this month's report, particularly the work our student council did, both for the Thanksgiving food drive. We collected over 1,000 different fruit items, household items, actually. We stuffed my truck and two other large SUVs with goods for the Nashua Children's Home. And we're currently collecting gifts for a gift drive, which we have mittens in the main office. Again, this is a student-run activity through our student council and just wanted to highlight the work that, that they're doing. Also wanted to highlight the facility updates, the shared robotics slash tech ed space, which has recently been rewired and adequately powering all of our recently purchased and newly installed equipment. And everything is up and running. Yep.
The doors are all on and everything.
The, the rolling door, I believe there's going to be construction during the upcoming breaks.
The door that had to be moved.
Ah, yes. Yes, the door is back in. That door is back in. And then the last thing is the installation of the greenhouse solar panels, thus making the greenhouse effectively green.
Great.
Yes.
Great. Excellent. It looks like there was a Tech Women Ambassador Week too, so that looks great.
There was, yeah. We had about 60, I think it was about 65 students from the middle school attend the Tech Women Ambassador Week and it was hosted at the high school this year. And we had quite a large number of staff members take part in chaperoning the trip as well. And all reports came back. It was a positive experience.
Excellent. Thank you. Questions from Grisone? Principal Grisone? Thank you very much. Thanks. Looks great.
Thank you. Okay, so I'll go through by and just real quick. On there, you see we have our instructional practices committee update. We did, the committees continue to meet. Our top 10 committee recently concluded its work. It worked pretty hard to come up with a recommendation. Unfortunately, the snow deterred us from meeting, which was unfortunate, but we're trying to get another meeting on the books sooner rather than later, so we can forge ahead with that work. I mentioned, you know, you've seen in my reports and some of my newsletters, for those who are on them, the work we've been doing around vaping in particular. And I just wanted to highlight a community member and a parent, Mary McGary, who works for the United States Public Health Services for being an amazing resource in the community. Really came out last night in force with a number of individuals and had quite the, a very interesting presentation. It was very multifaceted, so really appreciate her efforts. And she's, has pledged to continue to work with us for free, which is always lovely. And it was just a great job. We appreciate her work. I'm going to skip the program of studies for now because I think we're going to go over that in deliberations. Is that an accurate assumption?
Yeah.
Okay. It's essentially, it's the same proposal was brought forward before that we discussed, but now in the packet for final approval, so we can move ahead with the master schedule and, and time. You know, and the very happy to be ranked number two in New Hampshire Public Schools for STEM. It's kind of a nice surprise in Newsweek. And want to note, Dr. Bro, our ELO coordinators work to bring in the youth traditional registered apprenticeships seminar or presentation for about 100 people that signed up, which is a pretty big number for people to come out in the community. And Dr. Bro also invited Deputy Commissioner Brennan out to meet with students in senior quest. And she's in, Superintendent Corey was there too. I'm sure he'll attest, she was incredibly impressed with the quality of ELOs and quest programs that our, our kids are running. It's really mind-blowing, the work that they're doing. So, we're very pleased. And I'm happy to take any questions.
I don't have any questions.
Okay.
I always have a question. Question? You always have a question. Wow. Covered. Great.
He is saving. He is saving.
Do you want to briefly, I, Brian's not here. We have the athletic.
Oh, I'm sorry. I totally skipped that. That was, thank you. Sorry.
Do you want to quickly go through that too?
Yep. I'm used to having Brian here, so that is my fault. I would be remiss to not highlight our first ever champ, football championship, state title in the history of the program. An amazing run, an amazing journey and an amazing game where our students, athletes really adopted a completely different style of play.
Cool.
And, and a viciously cold, miserable, some of the most miserable conditions I've ever seen a game being played and completely adapted and, and once again, made their community very proud with their determination effort. So, we're very excited about that. And they get to practice on the new turf field, by the way, too beforehand, which is kind of cool.
That's awesome. Great. And then there's some comments here about this Gmax testing. Do we need to comment on that at all? Oh, sure. But I was still looking at this.
Where?
Well, there's a middle.
I skipped down.
It's in between. We're going to get to middle school in a second. Just do the Gmax testing first.
Sure. The Gmax testing is a test that's done on the turf field that really gives you a concrete rating with regard to concussion. The safety level is 165. I came in roughly right around 90. It's a guarantee that we will be below the Gmax for the first eight years that the turf is installed. The other thing to note is that we chose, which is, is new in the last half dozen years, and I'll call it like the, the underlayment or the, the padding you would put down below wall-to-wall carpeting. Our turf has that safety padding under it, so it significantly increases the ability to take a hit for a student who is tackled or went to the ground.
Is that under the crumb?
Is that, that is actually under the carpet and it reduces the, the amount of crumb that's needed because you can use more sand and less crumb. So, there were a lot of good value to that padding. Brian did want to mention that the middle school has all their winter sports underway. The wrestling team is still preparing for their first match of the season, but the boys and girls basketballs are up to 3-0 starts this year. And he and Ally have just been doing a wonderful job with Rob, excuse me, Ron. And really, I just met with them today. We're off to a very good winter season. It seems to just be flying by.
It's unbelievable.
Once again. Do we want to do student reports too?
Thank you. But I just want to make a comment on the turf field and the Gmax testing. So, I think it's amazing that we have that ability to know. And that is one of the advantages to turf fields because we probably can't do the same type of testing on a grass field, can we?
You can't.
Right. So, just, just a positive of a turf field is that you can know what the impact will be. So, just one. Gotcha. Yes. And is there any more comments on middle school's budget? Good, Tim?
No, we're off to the next one.
Off to a great start. Great. Just feedback for Brian. Just a little thing for me. I'd love to see some participation numbers if someone could let him know coming up next year, next, next time. Because I really always appreciate reports on wins and losses, but it is a participation that really matters to me. Some people care a lot about wins and losses. I care about who's doing what. Got it. Holly, is that on the winter sports or? I, I think usually what he does is gives us a, like the fall sport, like we haven't seen the fall sport numbers, so maybe fall and winter, however he wants to do it, but it would be great.
He can get those pretty easily.
I thought we saw the fall.
I thought we saw the fall too. We did see fall.
Yeah, and he will, and what he'll do is he'll keep, he'll keep the fall and add the winter to it as he goes through.
Yeah. Maybe, maybe he needs to just keep that on there for me because clearly I don't remember things. So, Ms. Mary and Annie, we have Mary and Annie here from student council. You guys can decide how you're going to do the report.
So, we, for events going on at the school, we had the play Radium Girls. It ended up being one day because of the snow, but I think it was a success. For student council, we were planning on presenting our four main, like the main products we've been working on in committees to Mr. Barnes tomorrow, but due to Challenge Day, which will be taking place tomorrow, our second time doing that, we're going to move that to next week. So, we'll be looking at traffic, student ID, and then we have two student events that we're planning. So, stay tuned for that.
Great. Thank you. You good, Annie?
Yeah.
Great. Thank you. You ladies don't need to stay, but you're welcome to stay.
Well, Mary just got here. She has to.
Mary, you, Mary, Mrs. Swalen says you have to stay.
Bring the extra time. Seat time.
Okay. Okay. Are there any other comments or questions on principal, athletic or student reports from the board? Okay. So, we have, we could move on to the presentation. We could do a facilities.
Let's do the facilities and I could probably do the budget as well.
Okay.
Okay. Just with regard to the facilities, I just wanted to give the board a quick update. Teagan Bond has been out. They were engineers on the turf field project. They have developed a punch list that they have sent to the turf company. And they will be coming back in the spring, obviously with the snow. We have some paving to complete, a couple of the sidewalks. We have a couple of the drains due to settling, the catch basins need to be lowered, so they'll be taking care of that. The, we'll do a second complete lawn installation, because a bunch of the grass took. But obviously in late October, it didn't all come in, so that'll be done. We have some erosion that occurred, because right after we got the field in, we went through some torrential rain, but it was in, which was good. And then we'll remove all the erosion control fencing next spring, after we have what I'll call more of a stable lawn. So it's very exciting. Kelly will be working with the turf company to finalize all the invoices. And we should be able to give a presentation in January. We have presently come in, the only unexpected expense was the amount that we discussed for approximately eleven thousand dollars regarding the ledge that we hit. Other than that, it came in on time and on budget, and we'll have a complete update in January.
Great, thank you. Questions?
I just want to thank Andy and the other team. But despite our hopes, we ended up relying on Superintendent to be our coordinator for the project. And I think we can all say it came through very, very well. Thank you very much. To be on time, on budget, and with good results is unique these days.
I want to echo that, very well done, Andy. You did a great job with that, and it is truly, I think, due to your hard work and effort and managing the committee, but managing everything, you did an outstanding job.
Thank you very much. I don't want to lose sight of the fact that it wouldn't happen without the other members of my team around the table, because when I had to go there, Gina and Bob were picking up things at the SAU. Linda represents the business office that has been involved since day one, the amount of hours that Kelly's put in. And then, you know, Rick was nice enough to come out and visit me at the field in those days where it didn't look good and say, no, we'll get there. And it really has worked out well. And I tell you, the most exciting thing was, we were able to get our football team on the field prior to their playing for the championship. And I went up, and we have some rather large alignment, which is a very good thing for football. And those young gentlemen were rolling back and forth on the field, because it was just so nice. It wasn't muddy, it wasn't dirty.
Wasn't rocky?
It wasn't rocky. And it gave me the opportunity to see kids be kids. And I think kind of going back to the quick talk on the social emotional, that's also some of the things we have to really recognize and not want to lose. Which is just wonderful to see kids be kids. And so whatever opportunities we can give them to not necessarily have to become that responsible adult while in high school, I think that's an advantage you don't like up.
Can we still call it the swamp though?
We can still call it that.
The swamp's across the way, but, yeah. No, definitely, I so appreciate it, and I think it's a great thing. And I got a text from my college student, because he saw the drone picture, sent it to me, like I didn't see it. And was like so excited, even though he'll never step foot on it as a player. So it's for the whole community of kids and athletes. Former in here, yeah, it's great.
And to that, I had shared a text, you know, once the field was open that Friday, there were just a group of students who went up and played various games on it, which was just wonderful. Because it really is there for community use, and I think it's going to see a lot of use. And again, I know Brian and Ron will be working with Rick and I to kind of define availability use and all of those things, because we really want to get all our teams and all our athletes on there. It's not any team's field, and it's not any school's field. It's a co-op field, and we hope to also utilize with the communities of both towns.
And we're working on policies related to that, procedures.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Absolutely. A lot of people working on that, a lot of people working on that, so it's great. Awesome.
Moving into budgets.
Do you want to, yeah, it's time with me, we're kind of.
Yeah, we're getting time to get organized. She's just so overwhelmed by the music and the concerts. Well, I'm very happy to report that we have achieved guidance, which is the number that we start with with the budget committee, that we believe will stay within the confines of what the citizens would like, and at the same time hopefully meet all the educational needs. And this year they do. Our operating budget will come in at a point nine percent increase. So it will be two hundred and ten thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars will be the increase in the operating budget. In terms of the warrant articles, we have the HESSA contract that we know. We have our annual contingency article. We have the athletic trust, which is something we asked for, but it's actually paid for through parents' payments. This year, we have proposed a maintenance trust of two hundred thousand dollars to play some catch-up. And we believe that the budget committee has supported that. Special ed trust, again this year. And then the assessment for the SAU to the co-op district will be nine hundred and ten thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars. That will mean if the voters were to approve all the warrants and everything passed, we would have a one point eight four percent increase, so it will be a below two percent increase this year. And that would relate to a dollar amount of four hundred and forty-eight thousand, six hundred and seventy-two. I want to publicly thank the chair of the budget committee and the budget committee as a whole. Bob and Amy went and presented for special ed. Tim and Rick have presented for each of their buildings. Kelly attends monthly, and I've gone on a couple occasions to address some specific things. And it's become a really solid process, and a very positive dialogue. And I'd like to also thank Cindy, who's not here tonight, for all her contributions as our board representative. In terms of what the budget means to us educationally, I'd just like to highlight that we got our personnel request, so we have that French position that we talked about in both buildings. We have captured the cost of the van drivers, and those vans are actually providing us with more educational time at CTE programs, because we control the drivers. So those kids are actually getting more time in classrooms, which is wonderful. We have a couple reductions under personnel. As the board knows, our athletic director at the high school is moving to part-time. And we have a district maintenance supervisor is also moving out of that role, so we'll be hiring an additional custodian. But those two will see us some savings there. We have the stipends for the, that the principals asked for. We're very excited, because all the districts at this point, and pretty much every budget is done, we're able to allocate their cost of the shared nurse. So we will be having a nurse come onboard, so that'll give us seven nurses for six schools. I'd like to also thank Bob and Amy. They have been working, and we're able to, through the use of our IDEA grant, we will have a nurse starting second semester within the co-op district to help us with meeting more of our student needs. So we're very excited about that. And that'll dovetail into potentially a full-time position in the next year. Tim has his after-school detention piece. For the first, I'm happy to say, I think this is the first time that Rick and I have been here. We did all our textbook and workbook requests.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yep, they all came through. Tim is getting the graphic calculators. Phase one of the high school tech plan, which is approximately ninety thousand dollars for engineering and computer science and physics, is all into the budget. And those will be static, I'll call it domino effect, because many of the machines that will come out of those classrooms will be repurposed and utilized. Again, the middle school, who was further along in their tech proposals, will still be getting the two requested Chromebook sets, along with their carts. So that will be, they'll be for tech, ed, art, and health, and a set for English. Replacement computer equipment, we're on our regular cycle. And staff members at the high school will receive their laptops. We will be replacing six projectors at the high school. And then we will be replacing a number of items due to the Windows 10 issue regarding HB 1612 with computer security. And for those of you at home that might not be familiar, we have some older machines that wouldn't run Windows 10, so we need to upgrade those. At the middle school, we have laptops for our faculty, a number of projectors, and again, a Windows 10 issue for lab 112, so those will be being replaced. Under shared services and software, we have our firewall, our fingerprinting machine, and our core routing switches for both buildings. Those were all funded and well-needed. Under safety, we are in phase two of four for cameras at the high school, so those were funded. We have field hockey goals and an ice machine at the high school to support athletics. And the carbon volleyball pole system made it through at the middle school. We did take out the soccer scoreboard, but as I think I mentioned to the board, we envisioned that almost all our games will be played at the new field, which will have a brand-new scoreboard. We will replace the one in the lower field, it's just something that we believe will be able to work through the budget or the athletic fee. Under maintenance facilities, you'll see in your copies that were sent, items that were funded, and then a series of items that were highlighted. Those great highlights means those will be going into the maintenance trust to be part of that two hundred thousand dollar expense. So we are replacing the intercoms at both buildings. We're in phase three of middle school tables. We have nurses, carts, students' chairs, water pumps and LED lighting, as well as thirty thousand dollars for flooring replacement. We're doing an abatement for the asbestos that we discovered down in the wing, the center. And that thirty thousand dollars will replace the flooring. The asbestos piece of that cost will be in the maintenance trust fund.
Just to clarify, all the things that are highlighted, you intend to pay out of the fund?
The maintenance trust, right.
Correct.
But the funds been, from phase, from round three to round four, was dropped by over a hundred thousand dollars?
Yes, because what happened is, we only have the two retirements this year, and the deadline has come to get the buyout fee. So we typically budget for four or five when Kelly does the budget. So when that money became free, we actually moved items back into the budget, the operating budget, which we prioritized for what I'll say have to have, like the intercom systems. And then the other items went into the maintenance trust. So we really haven't lowered what we wanted, we just utilized that savings we had from lack of retirees.
So does that mean you're going to be paying it up this year?
In terms of like the intercoms and those pieces, yes.
So those were things that were in round three going to be paid for next year?
Would have been done this summer.
But next year's but, when I say year, I'm talking budget.
Yes, you're correct. So we have, I'm making up a lot of ground on maintenance. Some of the bigger items that we're very excited about. We have phase one of the road paving, and we have been communicating with the town. We believe that we can go in with them, and they've said that would be okay, and get that purchasing power on the amount of asphalt, because they're going to be doing a number of pavings in town. So we have sixty thousand dollars in phase one, which is intended to go from the entrance to up to Jeff Smith, which Rick and I referred to as right before the bridge.
Yep.
All right. So it's going.
So from the entrance?
Past, is it going to cover the area by the lower parking lots, where it's really torn up?
Yes.
Okay, so it's going past Jeff Smith ways.
Right, all the way up to the bridge.
Okay.
So it's past Jeff Smith, is the bridge beyond the parking lots?
Yeah, it's past that little.
Yeah, it's.
That little section, like before the stop sign that comes around.
Yeah.
I know, I got you.
Yep, yes.
So it's going to go all the way to that?
Not, not to the stop sign, to before the stop sign.
I got you, yeah, I think I know. I think we're talking the same thing.
Also, the maintenance trust will have new cafeteria flooring at the high school. We'll be doing phase two of painting at the high school. And then at the middle school, we have allocated about twenty-five thousand dollars for paving issues that Tim has identified, I believe it's on the backside of the building, Tim?
Yeah, there's the backside in one of the entrance ways as well.
And then we have about ten thousand dollars to some HVAC. So that takes us through there. So our operating budget currently stands at twenty-three million, four ninety-three, five ninety-seven, which I believe Kelly told me this afternoon was approximately about thirteen hundred dollars under guidance.
What is the forty grand elevator replacement hold?
We know that some point in the next couple of years, the middle school elevator is going to need to be replaced. So what we're doing is we're funding forty thousand dollars of the replacement costs, which will probably be somewhere eighty to a hundred thousand dollars. And then we'll fund the second phase next year. We know from what the company has told us, we'll be able to get through next year unless something just totally unexpected happens.
So it's forty thousand to do work, or it's forty thousand to accumulate?
Forty thousand dollars to accumulate, to be able to totally replace the elevator.
But are you accumulating it in the general fund?
Into the maintenance trust.
Okay, it didn't, okay. Didn't get highlighted, so it's all white. At least on mine.
Yeah, so like on ours, see, it's not highlighted.
Okay, I will check with Kelly, but it's definitely going to maintenance trust, because otherwise we couldn't keep it all.
That was my confusion.
We're not allowed to hold it, so.
Right, thank you very much. So we have, the HESSA contract will be eighty-one thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine. Contingency is our usual hundred thousand dollars. The SAU assessment is nine hundred and ten thousand, two fifty-five. The athletic trust is sixty-seven thousand dollars, again, that is parent paid. The maintenance trust stands right now at two hundred thousand dollars, and the special ed trust stands at twenty-five thousand dollars.
Does our pay-to-play fees stay constant because our number of students is constant, or are we just budgeting the same amount?
We haven't made an increase to pay to play since I've been here.
He means like the sixty-seven thousand dollars. We always seem to have sixty-seven thousand.
Yeah, we can always use that number, and I'm wondering if our participation is that constant.
That's a number we feel very confident that will come in. What has typically happened, I think right now, I'll say between thirty-five thousand and forty thousand dollars remains in the athletic trust account. And that's because there are years where that number might be seventy-two.
Okay.
And that, and then just to answer your question, Tom, on the, under the maintenance trust in round four, why the forty thousand dollars isn't highlighted? Because Kelly only highlighted the ones that came in from the budget.
Oh, that were moving?
Right, so you could pair the two up.
Okay.
Yep, so the elevator replacement hold has always been in just that. So this is a very strong budget. We're very excited about it, it gives us many, many things that we need, and I think really sets us up well. I'm very excited about, you know, Rick's efforts around the tech proposal and our ability to fund that, because I think that's going to really play out well for us in the future. Any questions about the co-op budget?
The point nine, that falls within line with guidance approximately, doesn't it?
Originally, guidance was set at two percent. And then we do a calculation when the contract has been standardized, which it had in this case. So I don't remember off the top of my head the calculation, but it really comes down to me, after you do that calculation, the operating budget should be around a point nine, because you're already funding those dollars needed for the teacher contract.
So what I'm saying is what you came in essentially matches guidance, so.
Correct.
Do you get any sense of whether there will be budget committee support for it?
I would be surprised if there wasn't, because we've worked really hard.
Really?
Yep.
I mean, by anyone, or?
I think there'll always be that discussion this year, if we can get a little more.
Yeah.
And the only place I would be comfortable going is not so much the operating, is the maintenance. And what I may do if we were asked to say find twenty or thirty thousand dollars is not have as much replacement for the elevator and move two or three items back out into maintenance. Because I think the items that are there are needed.
Okay, no, that's great.
And just to give you how this falls into play, because I think it's important that voters know, in Brookline, you're looking at an operating budget that's going to go down two point two percent, because they have a bond coming off. And in the Hollis District, you're looking at a budget that's going up probably right around seven percent, because there is a significant influx of student service costs identified with students, and they'll be on the way to the co-op in a few years. So as much as we received a windfall this year with students aging out, there are more on the way.
Does that seven percent represent just the expenditure side of it?
Yes.
At this point?
Yes, because the thing that will benefit both towns is our adequacy rate is going up, like it did this year. And in both towns, they saw their tax rate was impacted in a positive way by that adequacy increase. And I think that will hold true. So with Brookline going down and adequacy going up, I think it'll be a good year. going down and adequacy going up, I think it'll be a good year. You know, it's just a matter of if the governor, after year two, we pull back on all this, there'll be that tax spike which you never want to have. With the board's permission, I'll just jump into the SAU.
Sure.
I know we're going to discuss this tomorrow night, but I'm going to try to go through it all the different boards just so that folks at home would know. At the SAU, we basically are looking at an increase that equates to the new position for the facilities director. We feel that having been through a number of projects and having buildings basically around 20 years old or older, that we really need somebody with a level of expertise around HVAC, roofing, those type of infrastructure pieces that can really start to guide us. Kelly has been doing yeoman's work regarding capital improvement plans and things of that nature, but we just feel this is the last piece from an SAU staffing point of view. So we're looking at, basically tomorrow night, we'll be discussing a budget that is up by about $68,000, which is really the cost of that one position.
Yeah.
Other than that position, the SAU budget is just salary and benefits, which are agreed upon increases for staff and comes back at approximately level funded. I will also share, we had Ann Elsner, Elser, who was with the SAU as the Assistant Director for Special Ed Services, moved all into the Hollis district. We did not fill that position. We allocated some stipend money to a couple of our building coordinators because A, we didn't think there was anybody out there from a standpoint of being late in the hiring process that we really saw as a good fit. And then B, Amy Rowe was able to step in and do a little more than we had anticipated. And I think I've already told the board, but again, for the people at home, Amy Rowe will be staying on board, working with Bob again next year, taking Ann's position.
So she's moving out of, the one time thing is closed?
It's closed, so.
When does it close?
Pardon me?
When does she, when does this change happen?
July 1st.
Okay.
I mean, she's in the role now basically, but she's doing it through her position that was created for the one year. That position will go away.
Okay.
And in some ways, that's kind of what we're swapping by eliminating that position and trying to get the facility to be.
She moves from a sort of a peer mentor to a support person.
Correct.
And I'm sure she'll still be a peer mentor.
Yeah.
Let's not fool ourselves.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you get to take more blame now.
Yeah, I heard you get my fair share.
Just for your information, that is not in our board packet. It's in our SAU governing board packet. But for folks at home, if they were looking for it, they wouldn't find it under the co-op agenda. They would find it under the SAU governing board agenda.
Correct.
Because everyone's looking for it, you know.
Oh, okay. And my big reason for sharing that is because those costs go to all our districts. And it's really important that a Hollis taxpayer knows what's going on in the co-op at Hollis and a Brookline taxpayer knows what's going on in Brookline in the co-op so you can make an informed decision when you come to annual meeting. And it is no questions. I will now turn it over to Gina to listen to the SEL presentation.
I just have a comment about the budget. I like to see, I'm happy to see that our personnel requests were, have made it through and some of the stipends and things like that because it's people that makes the district tick. So I appreciate that. Good job, everyone. Herculean amount of work, I'm sure. So, thank you. Okay. So, back to the presentation on whole child education.
So thank you so much.
Would you like me to drop lights or are we good?
Oh.
You're good.
Leave us sitting there.
Does anybody want to rearrange, take a little, and pass candy? Because it's time for, it's time for the movie and we'd like to have some milk done.
I have popcorn tonight.
There are chocolate.
Oh, well, they aren't funny.
It's the take five. They're here for me.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
I'm getting healthy apple, have chocolate.
No, no, it's all good. All good.
Okay.
There we go.
That's, that's good, like that. That's perfect. That way we can still see you. That's great.
You.
All right. Well, first of all, I just wanted to thank everyone for, it's weird I'm talking to people behind me.
I'm sorry, I just need to.
No, I get it. Thank everyone for accommodating the agenda adjustment. It's important to see your children in their first band concert. But anyway, Bob and I have been working together on this committee for the past few years. We're here to talk about whole child focus. When we presented to the governing board at the first meeting of the fiscal year, we presented as an entire SAU because really we've worked diligently over the past few years to bring us all together, to remind ourselves of why we're here and to kind of take a look at the child from K to 12 because that's what we do. We work with, with our kids from when they first come to us and until they graduate and we want to always consider the whole child. A few years ago, I noticed that there were a number of professional development requests or individual building requests related to various aspects of social emotional learning or whole child focus or, and we were doing different things and it was all great work, but I wanted to stop, take a step back and really identify as a district, what are we doing and how do we coordinate our efforts and make sure that we're, that we're all moving together in, in the same direction. And so quite a few years ago, we put together the SAU 41 Social Emotional Learning Committee. So that's where, where we started. You've seen snippets here and there in individual board goal presentations. We've been doing, we've been working on this for years, but here we are just to talk about what we're doing as an entire SAU.
And when we talk about whole child focus, I think it's important just to talk about one aspect of that and that's physical safety. And I want to just highlight that briefly because when it comes to emergency management and school safety, we are a leader in the state. You know, we've won several awards. And I just wanted to highlight a couple of the things that we've done over the years to become a leader in physical safety. One, we've standardized all of our safety procedures across all six of our buildings. We've taken extensive time over the summer to have the same emergency operation plans, to have the same procedures. So that when you walk into Hollis Primary School as a volunteer or a substitute or as a student, what, how we respond to emergencies is identical to how we respond to emergencies at, at the high school. We've also had staff that have participated in hundreds of hours of professional development that they've gone out of their way to attend. And that includes training in incident command, active shooter and threat assessment. Each summer, our buildings, we open the doors to law enforcement. We have homeland security and local police departments that come in here and train. All of our Hollis and Brookline police officers are very familiar with our buildings. They're in here, they're training. And so are other local law enforcement as well. This is the place, they call Hollis and Brookline when law enforcement is looking for a school to be able to train and, you know, implement some of their procedures. Also, you know, the governor two years ago started an emergency preparedness task force after a school tragedy. And there was one teacher who represented that group and that was a Hollis Brookline teacher, Dr. Laura DeRosa. We drill and we drill and we, we drill more. We also have a district-wide safety committee, which is very unique. It's actually one of a kind. It includes representatives from all six buildings. It includes emergency personnel from Hollis and Brookline, police, fire, EMS. The Director of Homeland Security for School Safety, Scott Lamerson, also serves on that committee. And we tackle really interesting problems. This past Tuesday, we met and we were having a conversation. How do we get emergency vehicles into Hollis Primary during carpool? Because it's a challenge because we have some traffic issues. So to have so many people at the table talking about these issues is really important. You know, we've also spent, invested hundreds of thousands of dollars in our buildings, whether it's security cameras, controlled access, film tents to make our schools safer, safer. Our school resource officer is the head, is the president of the New Hampshire School Resource Officers Association. And then lastly, I'd just like to highlight, last June, we did a presentation at the Emergency Preparedness Conference, which was interesting because schools don't typically present at this conference. There's thousands of first responders and they usually go to hear presentations from homeland security, police or fire. Well, you know, Hollis Brookline presented and it was very well attended. And it was interesting because the Department of Homeland Security, the head of the Department of Homeland Security, you know, showed up with several of his colleagues. They sat in the front row. And the comment that he made at the start of the presentation was, this is Hollis and Brookline. They are the standard when it comes to safety and security in the state of New Hampshire. And so, you know, we do safety really, really well. But as a district, we've identified it's not enough. We are, we're not doing enough. Because for all of the wonderful things we do with physical safety, physical safety is reactive. It's predicated on a tragedy happening or something terrible happening and how we respond to that tragedy. And I'd like to think with all of the training and all the things we put in place, we would respond well. However, we need to be proactive. We know that we have, as our speakers pointed out, we have kids with tremendous anxiety, depression, kids with school refusal behavior, kids who have experienced significant amounts of trauma. And our teachers have done an incredible job to promote social and emotional learnings in their classrooms. Our administrators have done lots to promote social emotional learning in their buildings. Really, the work that we're looking to do is make this more strategic, more systematic, more consistent across all six of our buildings. And I just would like to add that this work really, which we've been doing for two years, really hit home at the November Professional Development Day. We had a speaker come in from the Choose Love Foundation. Choose Love is a foundation that was started by Scarlett Lewis. Scarlett Lewis is the mother of Jessie Lewis. Jessie Lewis was murdered along with 19 of his classmates and seven teachers at Sandy Hook. And she talked about the importance of building a community of care based upon strong relationships, you know, really celebrating uniqueness in students, you know, building community. And this is a message that really resonates with our teachers because I think they do it every day. The goal of this work is really to be more systematic and more thoughtful about how we approach this work moving forward.
Okay, so as we mentioned, this work started as an SAU committee two and a half years ago or so. And we wanted, our goal was to be systematic. So we started by developing a mission statement. We also wanted to identify an agreed upon definition because we were doing so much work that was in pockets all over the place. And we wanted to make sure that when we said social emotional learning, we had a common understanding of what that meant and what work went with that. We also worked hard to develop a community resource list. So if there was a student in crisis, the adults in that building immediately had numerous resources to provide for the family, for the teachers of the students impacted, for the, for anyone that, that needed somebody to go to. We had a list and we, we have this incredible list that's available to all of our staff members. We also knew that we were doing a lot of great work. So we wanted to identify, just start listing off everything that we're doing and try to identify what was effective, what was less effective, what was a duplicate, and how do we not just do more, but make sure what we're doing is meaningful and impactful. We, we also spent some time creating and implementing a teacher questionnaire to figure out in the classroom, what does it look like? What are you seeing? For nurses, who's visiting you? What are the needs? Administrators and school counselors as well. And then we identified some focus areas for the district because you can't do everything in one year. So let's focus on a smaller area and do it really well and then continue to move forward. So our mission statement was, as you can see here, is to promote a relationship-centered culture that supports academic, social, emotional and physical well-being in a nurturing learning environment. We aim to develop a resilient and productive members, to develop resilient and productive members of society and be responsive to the diversity and needs of students, staff, families and community. And our definition of social emotional learning, we pulled this from, from Cassel. And Cassel is a collaborative for academic, social and emotional learning. And they're sort of, they led the work with social emotional learning. They've been doing work for over 20 years. They drive the research, they guide practice and they inform a lot of policy in this area. And the definition is, as presented here, it is a process by which children and adults develop the awareness and skills to make positive decisions, deepen their relationships and reach their goals.
Some of the work with the district committee included really diving into the research and that was actually really the starting point is, you know, looking at what does the research say? And this included looking at several studies. And one of the studies that we spent quite a bit of time dissecting was a 2013 study by the American College of Health Association. And I, I won't read all of the stats, but just to highlight a couple. So they administered the survey to 100,000 college students and they found that 84.3% of college students felt overwhelmed by all that they had to do. 60% felt sad, 57% felt very lonely, 51% felt overwhelming anxiety. So half of college students, 100 of the 100,000, half of them said that they experienced overwhelming anxiety. Also, 46% reported they felt feelings of hopelessness. And then the other stat that really hit home with the group was that 8% seriously considered suicide. You know, so there's a lot of data out there to support this. A lot of the articles that we looked at defined particularly at the college level, you know, are, that there's a mental health crisis that's occurring post-secondary. Kids are not, they may be coming to college equipped with the academic skills, but those social and emotional skills, they're not coming. And that's really where we're seeing statistics like this that play out. So, so why SEL? This, you know, again, looking at the research and why this work was important to the group. And again, I won't read through all of this, but you know, one of the big takeaways for us is that SEL programs enhance children's confidence. It increases their engagement in school along with their test scores and grades and can reduce conduct problems. So, you know, one of the interesting things when looking at the research, it was interesting that there's a direct correlation. Schools that have really robust social and emotional programs actually saw an increase in academic achievement. So that connection is there. So, so when, you know, someone makes the argument that, you know, social emotional, you know, learning is sort of on a separate path from academic achievement. Well, there's actually a lot of research that says when we focus on kids' social emotional well-being, we actually increase their academic achievement. And a lot of this, you know, some of this is common sense. Children who are able to effectively manage their thinking, attention and behavior, they have higher levels of achievement. And then another term that is often thrown around that we've heard before is this concept of college ready. And we've tended to think of college ready in terms of, again, that academic piece. But children with greater social emotional competency are more likely to be ready for college, succeed in careers and have positive relationships, better mental health and become engaged citizens. In addition, school-based SEL programs can improve students' competency, enhance their academic achievement, as we indicated. And, you know, students with strong social skills are more likely to make and sustain friendships, initiate positive relationships. Again, you're going to hear that word relationships, relationships over and over again because it's critically important to this work. And then, then a big one is the idea, social and emotional skills serve as an important protective factor in the face of negative life events or chronic stressors. And this is really important because we have learned a tremendous amount about brain science and the impact that trauma has on the brain. And we have learned through research that trauma, what we often call adverse childhood experience or childhood trauma or ACEs, actually can rewire the brain. And the rewiring of the brain can create a tremendous amount of issues for students, not only in terms of their academics, but in terms of their relationships, their emotional regulation, depression, anxiety, all of the things that we're seeing. Now, when you look at the research, you can say, wow, you know, this looks pretty bleak. If we can rewire the brain, there's pathology here around trauma. But the good news is there's actually research to suggest the brain can be rewired. And social and emotional learning, when done well through a research-based program, can actually do that. You can actually rewire the brain. So that, that's some of the why for, for our committee work, why we felt that this work is, is, is important and why we need to be more systematic in the delivery of social emotional learning.
Can you hold us to the end?
Yes, please. So going back to sort of our definition, and this is the castle wheel. And I think when you take a look at the individual castle competencies, it seems quite obvious that these are really important skills that, that we know to be critical for this, for becoming a successful adult. So self-awareness, self-management, responsible decision-making, relationship skills, social awareness, those are key concepts. A couple additional ones, goal-directed behavior, optimistic thinking behavior and personal responsibility. Those are some additional factors that we looked at as a committee. And specifically, those are the competencies that we looked at when we developed the question. And specifically, those are the competencies that we looked at when we developed the questionnaire for our administrators, school counselors, nurses, and every single classroom teacher. And we asked the question. So we're going to go, like, the blue goes together and the green goes together. So we asked the teachers the question. In the last four weeks, how often did students in this class demonstrate this skill? And we defined what social awareness was, and then we asked, and there were four choices, frequently, very frequently, occasionally, or rarely slash never. And so, we took a look at the results. We also then asked, relative to social awareness, how comfortable are you teaching this skill? Because we wanted to know, what were the observed skills that were most lacking with our students? And then, more so, what areas did we have to provide professional development for our faculty? And interestingly enough, or maybe it was obvious, there's a correlation between what skills our students seemed to be lacking in terms of their ability to demonstrate it on a daily basis, and areas where teachers felt they wanted more professional development. Now, the numbers aren't staggering, but essentially, self-management and self-awareness, that's why they're highlighted in blue, were, I would say, lower than all the other competencies. And then, if you look over to the right, they also were areas that teachers felt that they were less comfortable in teaching those skills. So those became the focus area for our district. This data was collected last spring, analyzed in May, and then put to task for the work that we started over the summer. So where do we go from here? So we have the SAU 41 district goal, "Whole Child," established. We presented to you a few months ago to the governing board. Of those areas that were highlighted in blue, the self-management and self-awareness, those became the social, emotional whole child strands. We focused our Professional Development Day in November, our school-wide, our district-wide Professional Development Day, on those areas. We, although we did a very similar approach for our teachers, we changed it a little bit, in that we had three key areas for our district that we were going to focus. And we required that each teacher have some learning time in each of those areas. So we, as Bob already mentioned, we started the day with every single faculty member listening to that same presentation by Choose Love, which I think is critical, because it really drives home the point of how critical it is to take a look at internal safety and well-being, and how it's everyone's job. It's not just for school counseling, it's not just for the elementary school, it's everyone's job. And it impacts everything you do. Strand one, so right from there, we went to whole child education. So you could choose which individual session you went to, but they were all focused on whole child education. Some folks went into a room and just started writing lessons on self-management and self-awareness. Some went to sessions where they just learned more about those specific skills. Some went to middle school-focused sessions. Some went to primary-focused sessions. Very specific, but all whole child education. The second strand was instructional best practices of our essential standards. And the final strand of the day was school safety. And as I was separating all the sessions and organizing the day, I mean, there was such a flow between the school safety and the whole child education. So really, the focus of the entire day was on whole child education. From the work over the summer, we, the SAU committee really made the switch. We are directing the work. We are saying that self-management and self-awareness is the work that we're going to be doing, but we need more classroom teachers on the ground working. Our SAU committee had some classroom teachers, had some school counselors, had some school psych. But we couldn't pull everyone from every building to meet at the same time in the middle of the day, because then we wouldn't have anybody for the students. So really, we need building-based committees that can work to identify what makes most sense in a K to three environment, and share that work between our two buildings. What makes most sense in a four to six, that's still focused on the directive of the SAU level committee. And also, when you're making a decision on four, six, you're making it based on the information you're getting from K to three. So you can build upon the knowledge and skills that are being worked on in that level, and then share that, what you're doing in four to six, with the middle school. How can we at the middle school build upon the work that's being done? Also, over the summer, we did a ton of curriculum work, but it wasn't just math, science, and social studies. We did Rock curriculum. We wrote an entire new curriculum for Rock, focused on self-management, self-awareness, and other social, emotional learning pieces. And we're continuing to write the curriculum, so that all students have exposure to these really critical pieces. And then, at the high school, they dedicated staff meetings to, what does this look like in this? Who do we bring in to work with the entire student body, or an entire grade level? The SAU committee will still meet quarterly to hold every individual building accountable, and to make sure that, what are we doing? Are we communicating K to twelve? So we have an organized approach, and a very intentional approach. And then, we're going to continue to ask the teachers the questions in the spring. With what we've implemented, did it have an impact? If not, do we need to do it again? Or do we need to change it a little bit and tweak it, so that it's a little bit more impactful? Do we still see the same areas as areas of need? Or have we seen growth in those areas and we need to change our focus? And then, continue that cycle. So, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Questions? Yeah, okay. Okay. So we have some questions. Do you want to turn the lights back?
Thank you.
That was a great presentation. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have some questions, too.
Okay. I'm ready.
I'm going to let you guys go first.
Gina's prepared to answer all of your questions.
Okay. They're all sort of together, though.
Yeah, right?
I'm going to let you guys go first.
What kind of activities are core to the social, emotional learning talent series? What is it that needs to be there? What might be lacking?
Sure. So, a lot of this is standardizing vocabulary and being very intentional about what you do. I think it's easier in an elementary school classroom. You have the teacher, and you're with the same group all day long, and morning meeting's the perfect time. Here's our story that we're going to read, and we're going to talk about the story and characteristics. But last year, the middle school group spent some time, I believe it was social studies and English, spent some time, let's take a look at the novels we're reading, or the main characters, or the main, um, folks in social studies, I can't think of the right word. And let's talk about what they're doing in a way that we're utilizing the same vocabulary terms. So we can see how a character may or may not have self-awareness, rather than utilizing other terms. So just kind of bringing it to all the content areas, and just being really intentional. You know, I don't want to put Tim on the spot, but he's, his committee's doing some great work, and it's going to be put into play on Friday, the twentieth.
Next week, yeah.
Yeah.
We have a group coming in, Personal Responsibility Organization, specifically talking with our students about self-awareness. They have a presentation specifically focused on tools for self-reliance with kiddos. And it comes with high recommendation. It's a group that is sponsored by the CAST, the Community Action Safety Team. Thank you. And our school counseling department, who also happens to run our student counseling, our student council, has that experience within smaller groups. And we're going to bring that in for a larger group of presentation. I know your question was specific to activities.
Well, what I'm trying to understand is, is it, because, is it, are they separate things that need to be introduced? Or is it a part, a way of how you conduct your everyday teaching?
I think it's both.
Yeah, it's both. Like, I'll give you one example of, you know, something we're trying to standardize across the district, and that is the research-based intervention called Mental Health First Aid. And you may have heard me talk about that before. You know, we are very lucky to have a trainer, Christine Turkot, in our district. There are not many trainers in all of the state of New Hampshire. In fact, she gets pulled to do trainings in other school districts. And the concept of Mental Health First Aid is very similar to first aid or CPR. You identify, you see someone who's having, experiencing a mental health crisis, and you provide them immediate support, as you bring in, you know, professionals to help support that. You know, that's work that, you know, she started with training all of the middle school. She's now trained probably a quarter of the high school, and many individuals at the elementary school, and will continue to do that. And also, run Mental Health First Aid trainings for parents, working with CAST. And also, when appropriate, providing that training to students. So that's something that's sort of universal. But then, you have these other programs, like the advisory program at the middle school that's more specific to the middle school.
Thank you. That helped me understand it. Is there an age limit to effective SEL meeting? Is there a point where you lose your, when we're talking about rewiring, and I know that on a grand scale, you know, they say you can't teach an old dog new tricks, they've proven that that's not true, that at any, at any age, we can learn things. But in terms of the spectrum of ages that we're dealing with, is it a continuum? Or are there certain things that you've got to get done by age ten, or you've got a much bigger task kind of thing?
Well, I think it's a continuum. I think obviously, as kids get older, and we're dealing with students who have experienced trauma, it becomes more challenging as students get older. One of the aspects of Choose Love that I, really resonated with me, and I know other folks as well, is Choose Love is not a student program. It's really a human program. And the concept is, we all take care of each other, and we're not just talking about kids. There's really a heavy focus on educators taking care of themselves, and taking care of each other as well. So I think if we apply the framework of Choose Love, and I know that each building will do it differently, I think you're going to see the focus is really on community as a whole, students, parents, and teachers as well.
But in terms of the continuum, I think, you know, as much as I said, we need to standardize this, we need to make sure we're all going in the same direction. We want to all go in the same direction. We want to standardize the work that we're doing, but we, there's not a one-size-fits-all. There's not one program that makes sense pre-K to twelve. So we have to start with something and then develop it as the kids develop. And even, you know, at any age or stage, you're going to have kids in various points, as you will with anything, that they're learning. And so, we have to be mindful of experiences they've had, experiences we've provided for them in the school, and then how do we bring them to the next phase, whatever that would be for them.
Towards the end, when you're talking about best practices and things, how do you actually assess effectiveness? I mean, you can issue questionnaires, but I've always found that we're all pretty poor judges of our own, of our own status. So I'm wondering how you go, when you introduce something, what do you envision being able to do to say, yes, this is working or not working?
I think that's a point that was really difficult for the committee. And that's probably where we spent the most time. How do we, what is effect, what does it mean to be effective? Can we ask all these questions? Do we want to ask questions? And what we really felt was, you can understand all of stuff, you, but if you don't put it into practice, it's not really effective. So that's why it was important for the committee to say, to ask the questions of the professionals, how often have you observed this? Because if you're not observing it, it doesn't matter. You know, it has to be put into play.
Are there, we've got these wonderful accreditation organizations that come around and assess all sorts of different things. Is there a similar program on a state, or a national, or regional level that can come in and, without, without the consequences of a bad, a bad outcome, give us an evaluation from an outside standpoint as to where we stand, and give us the ability to take a barometer reading periodically?
Potentially. I mean, I have to say that we started the work three years ago by bringing in the Office of Student Wellness, who was absolutely blown away by what we do in our district, and said, essentially, "Okay, then. I think you guys are doing a great job." And, but that doesn't really say, is it effective? You know, there's so many factors.
Well, that's why I'm wondering if you come back and say, year to year, because, like you said, the things that you're talking about on a, on a case-by-case basis, there's nothing I haven't been hearing for all the time that I've been involved with schools as a parent, as a board member. I mean, starting with the idea of the one-on-one relationship. My kids were always told, it doesn't matter who it is, find an adult in this building that you're comfortable talking to about anything. It doesn't matter who it is, whether it's a custodian or a principal. I mean, whoever that is, and I always got the feeling that our staff respected the need for that and made that a priority. But what I'm hearing you saying is, we need to standardize and not rely on just the anecdotal requests. And I like that. But then, I come back to the thing of, well, are we spending a lot of time doing something that is effective, as you mentioned? How are we going to find out if we're, if we're progressing? And if you, if there's something the board can do, whether through authorization, or community support, or something to do that, that's what we need to know, so that we can, we can do something other than nod our heads and say, yeah, we like it.
Thank you.
I just wanted to jump in and add one thing there. Whether we want, want this organization to do so or not, I've just received an email from Niasc that our five-year reports do in the spring, which will be coming before you. So, and one of those items will definitely be advisory, which is connecting to an individual adult in the building. So that is something that they will be looking for, so.
Well, and I, you're right, we can't judge that piece by anecdote alone. But I do, I mean, from anecdote, I do know that I raised three kids through this process, and I think they would all say they were highly connected to more than one adult in the buildings that they were in. And I guess, I think there could be some value from that being created organically versus being assigned, because we've all been in situations where we were assigned a mentor that really didn't click with our personality. And a lot of that ability to be that effective one-on-one for these kids is to click. And it's just, you know, who do you feel comfortable talking to? And we can't assign that from, from an administrative standpoint. To say that, then, because that was, I mean, when we talked about in the, in public comment, that that was something really important. And I feel like that is one thing, as a district, that I think we really excel at. I really think that, based upon my experience, both at a board level and as parent level, we, we really knock it out of the park in that area. And I think it's a priority of our staff to do that. So the two things that we're sort of, you know, if you want to say we are not excelling at by our own standards, is the self-awareness and self-management. And I'm trying to go back to, how do we teach that? And then, you said somebody's coming in to kind of present some methods. And I guess I'm kind of curious, because that seems to me the most difficult thing for our kids to figure out, in a culture where we have taken away a lot of our kids' ability to self-manage. I mean, we have kids reaching the co-op, who are still, have babysitters, who still are having their time managed by adults. Those things were not typical of my generation, and I'm older than some of you. But we managed, by the time we got to seventh grade, our own time, our, put ourselves in the house, made our own meals, put ourselves to bed many of those times. So, like, this is a very different generation these kids are growing up to. So we had opportunities to self-manage at home, where parents were still around, but not necessarily doing it for us. And I think this generation is being managed, often, all the way up until the time they leave for college. And while they're still in college, if I listen to what's in the public, is there still snowplows, helicopter parents monitoring what our college professors are doing? So it's a very different culture and environment. So how do we teach self-management when they don't have as many times to try it out on their own, as our generation may have had?
Good.
Sorry.
No, I just wanted to comment on that. I think one of the components that our kids face is, in regards to self-awareness, is the communication piece that we did not grow up with, with cyber communication. So, without understanding how you impact another, another individual, and the influence or just straight impact you can have on someone, be it positive or negative, not being in the presence of that individual when they receive whatever messaging, whatever communication it is, be it social media, or texting, or what have you, it reduces the awareness and complicates that communication piece. So our students not only aren't getting that exposure, but they're also tasked and challenged with a more complicated web of communication that they're not necessarily exposed to how they're impacting others. So when we talk about self-awareness with kids, it's much more complicated than, well, I'm at the lunch table and I did something that was bothersome to other kids. There's a whole nother layer of impact that kids have on There's a whole nother layer of impact that kids have on each other that we did not have and that we now have to educate students on how to navigate those interactions and those dynamics.
Do we know how to navigate those interactions?
Do we know how to? I think it's a much more complicated process for our kids. And also, if anything, you know, we, we have our perspective from knowing what communication looked like without these added additional layers. But for kids growing up with that, with a smartphone in their hands, that age, whatever.
Ten.
Yeah, fill in the blank because it could be anything. Yeah, it could be anything. I think that just adds to the complication and the challenges that we have that lie ahead for our kids in their self-awareness. And I think that is a huge part of all that we're talking about and how kids understand their impact on others and how they are being received and then thus their, their view of themselves. And I think it's just a more complicated matter than just being self-aware in and of itself. There's a whole nother, sorry.
No, I think that's great, Tim. And I think that's just the way you're speaking on that and all of us really shows that social and emotional learning has been a priority of the, all of the people that I've come in contact with since I've been on this board. It's been a conversation that we've had. And this presentation is kind of a culmination of, I have a list in front of me of all the things that we've put into place. And we, and when I say we, I don't mean the board. I mean, the administrative team, superintendent, assistant superintendents, building administrators, staff have put into place over the past, you know, six to eight years, I think, going back to, you know, the FIMIS program. I have a list here. Cav block came in in 2014, I believe, which was about five years ago. We had the Choices program that's come in. Choices is a great program to help kids who maybe don't feel super comfortable in the schools right now. That's great. We restructured our entire school counseling department, giving our counselors at the high school fewer students, but giving them a charter to say, you're going to follow this student completely. But we've also contracted with Harbor Homes to make sure that we have crisis counseling in place so that our school counselors don't lose an entire day to crisis counseling. We have put into place a change in start time, which when we talk about change, I think that committee is like the prime example of a compromise where the student initiative was, we want to start school at 8:30, and they didn't get an hour and a half, they got 20 minutes. But that 20 minutes, we heard from Rick, has made a significant difference in physical and social and emotional, all the way across the board, taking a little bit of the pressure off of our kids. We have staff members who have initiatives like HB the Change and Initiated Challenge Day, which is happening tomorrow. And I got to the privilege of experiencing it last year. And that has made, I just can't say enough good things about that day. We have United for All at the Middle School, which is also relatively, say like four years old, would you say?
And includes participation by a number of high school students as well. So it's seven through 12.
Right, seven through 12. The commitment to Rock has been very clear to me in conversations with our middle school staff and with, you know, revising of the curriculum. That's implementation of an instructional practices committee to take a look at best practices at the, at the co-op level and including the middle school and making some changes in personalized learning policy. Being on the policy committee, I think 75% of the policies we've addressed in the last year have something to do with social and emotional learning. So I so appreciate this presentation because it shows the work that you've been doing for the past two or three years. But it also is a culmination of the work that's been going on for years and years and years in social and emotional learning in this district. And the priority has been on what will make kids function better. I also want to say to Tom that I think one of the points you made about how do we measure it? I actually think revisiting this questionnaire will just help us see if there's any changes. But sometimes we can't measure by just a number. Sometimes it's just kids are reporting, like for example, in Cav block. Like we putting, I remember I was in, I was not on the board, but I went to one of those forums about Cav block. The whole purpose was to try and decrease stress. I don't know if our numbers have decreased, but when we talk to kids and we say, what if we took away Cav block? They're, like, you can see the blood pressure rise, the idea of losing Cav block. This year, Adaptive Schedular came into place for Cav block. So now our kids, I asked my son today just to confirm, but he takes 10 minutes every fourth period on Monday. He's a freshman, and he gets to choose where he's going to go. And so in essence, he can choose who he wants to be with. So yeah, he might need math help. He might have, he might need some test to make up or something. But if he sees so-and-so, Mrs. So-and-so has an open study, he can go to Mrs. So-and-so's study. And if he likes Mrs. So-and-so, he can go there every week. So that's where relationships will be built. And we haven't even really seen how effective Adaptive Schedular is because we're kind of in a semi-pilot, right? We piloted it last year with a few kids, but now we're.
This is the first year that we actually run building.
First, the whole school is doing it. And, you know, kids didn't like it at first. Our older students, our seniors, were like, no, this is a change. But this change has been a small change, but it's a change that we're going to see some, we hope to see some changes with. So we have a lot of things in place, and you guys have done some great work, I think. And I'm, I'm excited to hear back, and I'm excited that it's going to be a building level committee. And I do think that there is a big difference with how you're going to teach this to a first grader and how you're going to talk to an 11th grader about it. And I think it's important that we get those building level committees going so that they can really be specific about what needs to happen. And I didn't even touch on like professional development. I mean, this isn't the first PD day that's been about social and emotional learning, you know?
Yeah, no, definitely not. But this was the first time it was, no, no, everyone is going to dedicate, you know, this amount of time to it, so.
So I just wanted to kind of summarize that because we did get some really good feedback about concerns that we're not addressing it or that we don't take it seriously. And, you know, my whole background, my whole life is about social and emotional learning. I mean, that's what I've been doing. So I really, I feel like that's why I'm on the school board. So I do take it pretty seriously, so.
I just have one more question, just a comment. But, you know, just an appreciation, sorry, I'm losing my voice, for so many things throughout the district, but especially this, just having a single mission across, you know, the, you know, I know that we're focused here on our middle school and high school students, but they're coming from our elementary schools. And I can't speak for Hollis, but I can speak for Brookline in the last couple of years. I have sat in on some of the classes, bringing in professionals for the mindfulness. Second grade and fourth grade this year, fifth grade's jumping on board in Hall, or in Brookline as well. So it's really neat to see because those are, those are kiddos that are coming up. And I've sat in on those. I've met the professional that comes in and I've, you know, seen a difference in the children. And I've had children myself in those. It's been a really, really neat experience. So it's, it's neat to see. I'm, I'm excited to see that as it transitions because they, they do come up here. So I think it'll be really neat to see. But I appreciate that it's all encompassed because we're all working through stuff. But yeah, that's all.
That's great. It's really great. Thank you very much. Anybody else? You good?
One of the things I just.
Yeah, sure. Go ahead, Tom.
One of the things that I know was important to, to my kids and to many of their peers was this relationship with a faculty member. For one of my kids, it was a teacher. For another, it was a coach. I mean, this is an area where I think athletics is a really big deal. But one of the things I, I hope we can make sure of, and this is something that's our responsibility, is that through policy, schedule, or whatever it is, that we maintain the environment where both the students and the staff feel the freedom to have that level of relationship. There's an awful lot going on with policy right now because of all the different movements of maintaining proper distance between adults and, and students. One of the things that kept my kids sane was the fact that they could blur that line between someone being a teacher and someone being a friend. And I don't want our staff to feel so afraid of developing a meaningful relationship. Granted, there's got to be propriety, but within the bounds of propriety, there's a lot, a lot of leeway that it's going to take different flavors for different kids. So we've got to be careful with our policy that we don't close the door on those opportunities.
Thank you. Thank you very much. It looks great, guys. Okay. It's like one of my favorite presentations.
Can I do something, can I do something out of your hurry and ask our public if they have any further comments on this topic?
All right. So at this point, we need to move on to deliberations. We need to see what action the board will take regarding the program of studies. Are you, I kind of feel like I'm losing board members.
I'm just making it to the trash.
You're up.
Okay.
Program of studies.
Program of studies. Are we presenting the program of studies? Is that what we're doing?
This is essentially the same program of studies that was presented at the last meeting. At this point, it's just the walkthrough. That's what you have in front of you, not in its entirety. And I'll kind of gloss over it, but I know we'll dive into some more specifics. Just the, you know, the first part is just trying to make the charts consistent and have the same format as much as possible, maintain the same formatting, which was inconsistent before. We talked about the prereq for chemistry with the, to be, have the completion with Algebra II or be concurrent or department head. And really, any of the changes that are in here are to make courses more accessible in the past. And, you know, the visual performing arts pieces are examples of that. Breaking down things in fundamentals of art. We spent a lot of time around that. There's been discussions with that over the years about fundamentals of art class being the gateway to everything and kids not getting access to other courses. And so we've made some positive changes there, I think, that will allow kids a little more freedom to move around there and explore those interests that they have. Noticeably, we moved intentionally for the top 10 language to be taken out of the program of studies. That's still a policy because that's where that work is ultimately going to land. So we felt it was good to just remove it from there. If, and if for some reason it ended up staying, it's still a policy. We'd still have the policy, have to abide by it, but it made sense to remove it in advance. Some of you I've had conversations with, Contract for Honors and Social Studies. We removed that and are going back to a heterogeneous grouping for that, which again, Niasse is right around the corner. So that's just another thing that they like to see. We made a best effort with that in a lot of different ways. It just didn't work, so it didn't make any sense to continue to chase that. We've had those discussions here. And we're excited about the engineering piece with robotics becoming engineering technology. I think that's a real upgrade and is indicative of the great work that our engineering teacher with his incredibly strong math background is bringing to the table. And I think a lot of our students are excited about that. And he's made, speaking of connections, many good connections to do that. And a removal of a course, and that's kind of it in a really fast way. But it's essentially the same thing that you saw last month when we were here.
I just have one comment. I think it's great, and I'm certainly going to go to approve it. I feel like the chart for English is a little confusing, and that's just my feeling on it. It has two sections of required. I know that the kids are, I understand what they're required to take. They need to take four years of English and a semester of writing. I just feel like the way the chart is created is a little confusing because it almost looks like AP English and Language Composition is required because it's in this required bucket. And I know it's technically non-elected because the kids need to take in English. But do you understand? I just feel like, I don't know how you make that a chart, but I, I just, I mean, I think it could go through this year because it's certainly a, you know, and you might, but you might get some feedback and some confusion on that because it just looks a little confusing to me.
And these are, this will not be the final formatting. I mean, it's, it's kind of, this is the, the basic idea, but we didn't go to the final formatting because of the pagination and everything else that is involved. But so any of the feedback that we take, I'd appreciate it.
I think it should be approved as is because it's not a change in what you're requiring or anything in the description. I just feel like that chart's a little off for me, and maybe I'm just not a visual person. Any other comments, questions? Only me? Wow, look at that. Okay, so I need a, excuse me. I need a motion to approve the Hollis Brookline High School program of studies as presented. So moved by Tom, seconded by Krista. All those in favor? We got four of us here right now? Okay. Beth has stepped out. I don't know, two minutes ago? Okay. Great, thank you. Thanks. I know it's a lot of work, so I appreciate it. Well, no, your whole staff.
It is, it is a ton of work, but it's worked a while.
It's the fastest it's ever been approved.
It is.
It's great.
Well, we did it pretty well last month.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did.
And they're learning.
So we, we are now up to policies. I could always use some help from the policy committee in presenting the policies just soon. The first policy up is can we make a motion to, I don't understand. Is this the way the motion should be to amend by replacing his, her, with their? Or is it just for third reading?
I would just.
Third reading and adoption, maybe?
I would, well, do you want to?
I think we can adopt it. We've only made minor changes.
Which one is this one?
This is Alternative Credit Options.
So I move to approve IMBC Alternative Credit Options as distributed for third reading and adoption.
Great. Moved by Tom, seconded by?
Second.
Krista. All right. So just on the discussion, we changed the his/her to their because for obvious reasons, really want to be in keeping with what the movement towards that is. Sorry, that's not. We are not going to be going through every single policy and just making that change. But as, as a policy committee, as policies come across our desk, we will make that change. So it's more like a grammatical change, but not really grammatical. And then the other thing that we changed is that we had never defined what the academic review committee was. And we don't want that defined in policy. We want it in the student handbook because it can change depending on the circumstances. So we want the building principal or his designated to be able to create that committee. So that's why we put the additional phrase as reference in the student handbook. And that's what we did with the whole policies.
Where is that?
It is, it's on page one, it's down halfway. It's in different places in each one of the policies. So those are the only changes that we made to this policy between. Second and third. Second and third, thank you. Long night. Are there any other comments? Questions? All in favor? Alternate credit, yes. Okay. So we've got a 5-0 on that one. Great, thank you.
A 5-0.
Hawaiian. Yeah, there we go. We're just, okay.
Put them down.
There you go. Okay. So next policy is IHBH. So again, I just, the language here is not, so.
What are we looking for on it though?
We need, so it's the same type of thing.
Do you want to adopt?
Adopt, yes.
Okay. I move to approve IHBH Extended Learning Opportunities as distributed in the agenda packet for third reading and adoption.
Moved by Tom, seconded by Krista. Again, the same exact changes, changed his or her to their. And if you'll notice.
I found it.
It's all the way like fourth there.
Third from the bottom. Extended learning opportunities.
So it says, as, right, brought to the academic review committee as reference in the student handbook. Any other questions? All in favor? Five to zero. And now we need to bring up IMBA again for the same type of thing. So it would be great to third and adopt.
I move to approve policy IMBA online slash internet-based education as distributed for third reading and adoption.
Tom moved second, seconded by Krista. You can find it in there, the his, hers, the there, and it's in the very first paragraph. Any questions? All in favor? Great. So that leaves us to the IIB. This is for second reading. I think we need to keep it as second reading. So if you'd like to, because I think there's some comments and conversation. So if you'd like to make a motion.
Well, if I make a motion, it's going to be with an amendment, so.
Okay. So how about we make a motion to form a conversation? Somebody like to make a motion to bring policy IIB class size for second reading?
So moved.
Any discussion?
Before me or after me?
Make your motion, Tom.
As, as I brought up last time, I, I had some questions about the, the.
As, as I brought up last time, I, I had some questions about the, the open door for the classes less than fifteen. Because I think that there needs to be some limit on small classes just being blanketly approved. And in discussion, in some offline conversation or communication with Rick, I got some of his input on what he typically experiences and how he approaches it. And the truth is, I'm, I'm not overly concerned about how this is being done with the current administration.
Right.
Knowing that policies often outlive the current participants, I would like to perhaps capture some of what he does in the following manner. Under the section where it says classes may have fewer than fifteen students if, put a comma after the first bullet, et cetera. Put a comment after the second bullet. Because both of those have their own reasons that they have to exist, and it's not really discretionary. But after the second bullet, it says, this class is designed to meet statement of standards or, I want to say or, for the next two, the capstone issue and the AP class, I'd like to add after the, after them, that, and has been approved with low enrollment by the building principal, and a fewer than ten students has been approved by the Hollis Brookline Cooper School Board. And what I'm trying to do here is give the principal the authority to authorize classes of, of, as low as ten for those. But it has to actually be put before it. It isn't just, there's no limit. And if it's going to be less than ten, I want the school board to, to sign off on it. Because ultimately, the school board is, is being held accountable by the community. I think the building's being held accountable by the students. The school board's being held accountable by the community. And if we're going to have classes of less than, less than ten students, I want it to be intentional and knowing that that, that's happening.
So when you say that, is it ten registered students?
Yeah.
Yes. With low enrollment. So, at the point of enrollment, because I, I-
When do we define enrollment?
When do we define the point of enrollment?
I mean, is that in the spring? Or, I mean, is it like the last day of school in the summer? Or is it the first day in the fall?
Okay, here's my intent. My intent is that we know that kids sign up for it and things change. And I don't know that we can necessarily pull a class out after it's been enrolled, that's my word, and scheduled, and then something, somebody transfers out of it. So I want to control, I want it at the point where they're setting the schedule and building the schedule and planning it out. If something happens unforeseen after that.
Yeah, I want it, if, if I'm going to entertain this idea that enrollment date has to be in the spring, before we recess for summer, and, because I want to be able to most likely vote on it at the June meeting. So if a child ends up in one of those, sorry, it's going to be needed earlier?
Yeah.
Okay, fine. I'm not going to argue with it. But, so I have two concerns. I have two concerns as I, May. I want, I want them to be able to adjust. And I also don't want to ever be in a situation, I don't think we'd be with this current administration, but I don't want somebody in the fall to now want to be able to drop a class and basically our administration or our counselors not allow that class to be dropped for fear that that class is now going to be on the antenna of the school board, and now there's only nine kids in there. If the kid needs out of a class or a kid wants out of a class, and they can graduate and all of those things, they should be able, without repercussions or any pressure, let them out. I just am afraid that we're going to have pressure at both ends.
That's not my intent. My intent is, yeah. No, I'm appreciating that.
It sounds like May, we're going to need to backdate.
Well, I don't know if you want to put a date or put an event. What constitutes the action of building that schedule?
Course selection.
Course selection. And done is done when their, when their schedules are handed to them, when we're at the point where we're ready to print, for lack of a better word.
When do they get them that early? They don't get them in April.
They don't. But we, we have done them as early as that, but it's been more of a May.
I worry if, if we didn't do them, we didn't make some decisions in April, how does that student now find out what they're going to take? So, you know, April, I still have May and June to find another class, talk to my parents, see, you know, all of those.
Figure out, I want to do E-Lax, what are my options?
All of those options. I think when we get into May, because we're at the end of the school year, we're getting ready for graduation, just the logistics of it.
Right.
I think they'd be too big a burden. So I'd almost like it to be April, so that we could inform students. Probably the week of April vacation, they come back and now they have basically a month and a half to make a decision on a class.
Can we back up for a second, though? I mean, does anyone agree with my intent?
I can see your intent, but I don't think it's necessary. I don't think we have enough classes that fall into this category. And I feel like we don't need to micromanage the administration in that way.
We have a lot of, a fair number of classes to drop below fifteen, don't we?
We do, but you're talking about classes that fall below ten.
No, I'm also talking about, right now, classes below fifteen don't even have to be brought to the administrator. It can just be scheduled if it's in those two categories, if it-
The top two categories.
No, the bottom two. I'm saying the bottom two categories. If, if, if only three people enroll for an AP class, they don't have to even tell Rick about it. I mean, Rick's going to find out about it, but, but I don't know if, how the next-
So if you want language in the policy to make sure that happens-
That's what I put in.
I would support that. Let the, that, that the principal, that's part of it. But then the second piece is what I don't support.
And that's if it's going to be less than ten.
Right. So I don't necessarily feel like the board needs to be on top of the less than ten, because I feel like we, I feel like it's a process as, as you're figuring it out and you're putting it together, and you are intrinsically aware of what's going on with that. I feel like in September, we get this list, and it's over. But we can then say to you, Rick, ew, this, this can't happen again. Like, we need to make a change for next year. So I feel like the board has enough say in it without it having to be in policy. That's just my feeling. I can be outvoted, I don't care. I can be the one to vote.
But I just, I just didn't think that, I don't think we have any say. I think, as a courtesy, we are currently kept in the loop. But there is nothing to say that that will continue.
When you first were talking about it, I was, I was disagreeing, thinking, you know, I don't know if we want to be micromanaging. However, thinking about it, for two things. One, I agree with Rick and Tim, I don't worry about it. And we trust your decisions, and I, I know they're in the, but you're right. We aren't always going to have Rick and Tim. Well, maybe we are, so.
My plan is for them to be here forever.
But second of all, Tom has a point that we have, people come up to us all the time, asking us, why are there eight people in the class? Why are we paying a teacher, teacher eight people in that class? If we have an answer as to why, I feel that we can then speak to it. If we, if we know the reasons behind. Because there's a chance we'll agree, well, okay, we're having nine in this class, and here's why, and they'll explain it, and we'll go, oh, okay, all right, I get it. And then, we can explain it to the public as opposed to just saying, I don't know.
I think we can get that in September, when we get the, the report. I mean, we could add some language in this policy to say that it would be reported out in September. We could do, I, I think what we need to do with this policy is go back. I think we need to take your language. I think we need, as a Policy Committee, to look at it. I think we need to consider some of those other things. But I think the conversation, we can get that information in September. I'm more, I'm a little concerned about the logistics of us approving six classes that have nine students. I, I just, I'm concerned about getting us in the middle of that process, which is, I think, very, at times, very situational. Very much like, this is what's happening here, these are the kids, this is what they need, this is what they want. And so, and yes, I mean, we could put some language in there to prevent a future administrator from just being completely hands-off, and all of a sudden, we have, you know, seventeen classes that are less than six. So I think what you're basically saying is we need to add some language. I just don't know if I agree with your language.
I, I agree with Holly, and my concern is that the April deadline is like putting you guys like under the gun with the scheduling.
I mean, like, they'd have to come up with a class, you know, we'd have to get that report out.
Well, that's, but that's not a bad thing, and I'm not afraid of micromanaging, as we all know. This isn't, if it's an area of, if it's an area that's under our purview, which is an important thing, this class size deals with two things that are sort of within our purview curriculum. And while the budget may actually belong to the Budget Committee, we are looked at to keep it in check as a school board. So because this impacts two of our primary functions, I think it's not such a bad thing. I want to make it manageable. I don't want to put an undue burden on Rick. I want to make sure that kids have flexibility to take the classes that they need and they want. But I don't necess, I'm not against Tom. I'm going to, I'm just going to speak in support of Tom's concept here. And now, I think the Policy Committee needs to kind of figure out how to make it work with the administrative needs. So I think there's some, I think there's a way to accommodate both concerns.
And that's why we go to second read, so, yes.
I have other comments about this policy.
I just wanted to alert the board for, you know, for third reading and have a discussion, because I think if you're going to do this policy, which I could absolutely support, but how are you going to address CTE classes that you're only sending a handful of kids and spending three or four times the amount to offer an AP class here?
They're not even potentially allowed to be that, I mean, that, they're not our classes.
Right, but if you're looking at, from an ultimate vision of cost.
No.
Okay. But I mean, if we-
It's costing us more to run that CTE. They give the kids the opportunity to go to that CTE program than it is to teach the AP class.
It is.
And I'm just saying, I'm, I'm not saying pro or con against the CTE experience, because I believe in it. I just think if we're going to discuss a policy like that, we need to look at what might happen if Rick all of a sudden has to say that we're not sending two kids to Alveron for X program.
Well, there is, there's a, well, first of all, CTE is not at all in this policy.
I understand, but once we get into the discussion of classes, I think-
But the other, but the other thing that can come, and we've talked about, is this, this whole idea of alternative credits. And, and CTE is an option, but so are online learning.
Yep.
So.
So I just wanted, maybe to have a broader discussion of this policy in terms of CTE, online learning, and those things. Because I think it's going to open that door, and somebody's going to pit an academic course we're offering versus a CTE course. So I'd rather have the discussion now, long before it ever happens, than after we cancel a class and some parent comes storming in and says, but you're sending this number of kids, and it costs us a bus, the tuition, all of that.
Well, if you can see a way to frame it either in parallel or as part of the policy discussion, fine. But if we're going to be voting on this policy, I'm still going to be pushing for putting some restrictions.
Oh, I have no problem with restrictions. I just want to already have addressed the question that might come up.
Yeah, I wanted to take that, I'll take this back to policy.
I have one of-
Okay, and that's great. And I also want to say, though, that this will come for third reading and not adoption. It'll be for third reading, and then we'll probably be at four readings. But, that's okay. Go ahead. Yeah, no, it doesn't have to change till next, April.
Right.
Go ahead.
Frequently beat up, it's usually at the high school, class sizes, that, over that twenty-five number. And if we're looking at this, like, we're looking at the policy, I think this is the time we have a conversation about, is that twenty-five a number that we want to be bound to? And I do, and I actually really want to make sure that we target that twenty for the Math, Science, Language Arts, and Social Studies in Foreign Languages. And that, I would almost prefer to move that maximum from twenty-five to something lower. And then I think that in that third from the bottom paragraph that talks about all maximum class sizes to be determined by the school board administration based, by the school administration based on the appropriate number for that age group, I think is redundant if, in fact, under class size, the board is saying the maximum size is twenty-five. We're determining what the maximum size is at that point. Because we're saying, we don't want it over twenty-five unless it falls under this specifically enumerated list, which is, you know, band and chorus and PE.
So you'd like to see that sentence gone?
I'd like to see the all maximum class sizes gone. And then I would like to at least hear-
You want to see that column gone?
No, this, I think that sentence.
No, this sentence, in that parag-
Okay, yeah, no, I, I-
Yeah. I think that goes, because I think we're the ones who have the, we would like to have the ability to set a maximum. And then I guess I'd like to figure out if I'm the only person here that would like to see that maximum set a little bit lower, closer to the twenty, which is the target. Because I'm tired of beating Rick up on an annual basis when our math classes get to be twenty-seven and twenty-eight. I mean, we go through this dance every single year, and I really am committed to small class sizes. And if we're really committed to making sure kids have opportunity for one-on-one interaction with teachers who are going to care about them and help them develop social, emotional well-being and all of that, put our class sizes at closer to twenty. It all plays in, and yes, it's going to cost more. I get that. But I'm committed to small class sizes.
So you'd like to see the maximum lower, but still have the caveat that an administrator can go over. Isn't that in there somewhere?
No, and if I take that sentence out. I took out the sentence that gave the administration the ability.
No, it says that if the, if the class exceeds the recommended maximum size, blah, 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 the superintendent shall consult with the appropriate principal and review the situation before deciding whether to take such steps as hiring additional personnel. So there's still an opportunity to be a little bit over.
This does not, this does not leave the option of actually holding that large class size if you actually read the words. It says, they can add personnel, they can add sections, or they can use other resources. It doesn't say you can exceed the maximum.
You can have the class.
Right.
So, you, if I understand correctly, you would like to both lower the, lower the maximum on some of these to the, to more in line with the target lines of the study.
Well, I would like, so I'm, I'm actually okay with band and chorus and PE being at the numbers that they are at, which are all large. And twenty-four happens to be, but I think that science should come down.
Isn't that a state, a state number?
Well, that's the number of spots that we have in the, I think that's a state number. It's a, it's a, it's a lab issue, right? It's a lab issue.
Okay.
But I, but you could have that number be twenty-two or twenty-three. It doesn't have to be the maximum.
So there's an appetite from other members of the board to see that maximum number be lower? I just need to know that so we can go into policy. That's-
I'm, I'm actually not in favor of lower if you're doing, what's it called, leveled classes. Well, where we have sort of leveled and through the weighting process and in theory qualifications, if you've got a relatively homogeneous group, I think that they can support the, the large class sizes. It's when, it's when you have a heterogeneous class that you run into problems.
I see what you're saying. Anyone else? Andy?
I just kind of have the same concern, because our budget will be set in a couple months for next year. And then we're, we're in the process of doing the scheduling. To come up with a teacher's salary or things like that would be very difficult within the confines of the budget.
Space is an issue, too.
Right. I support the concept. I just, I think the same way, I'd like to have a bigger discussion on it. I'd like to have almost a time, maybe for an agenda, just to talk about class size. Because I'm not in disagreement with Tom. If I'm a math teacher teaching on his section, if I have twenty-seven, I'm not that worried about it. I mean, it'd be ideal to have twenty-three, twenty-four, but I'm not that worried. But I do have concerns if I'm teaching, let's say, a lower level.
Algebra one, and you've got the whole gamut.
Right. So I, I would like to see us just spend, and I think we've talked about this a little comeback, not as this, just as a policy, but just more as a board discussion around class sizes. What are our goals, what are our objectives? And then, then we could probably go back to policy. So I'm almost suggesting-
So maybe we should make this as a discussion item for next month. We'll keep it in policy, we'll hash out some of the things, come back.
Table it for a month, too.
Table, table this policy for a month. We'll, you know, we've done the first read, proved the first read, move it to a table, discuss it, and then, but we'll, we'll keep it on the policy agenda as well, so we can keep talking about it.
But really, if we're going to make a, if we're going to make a change, we need to probably do a change to class sizes after March.
We would almost have to set a year. We would almost have to set a year, like effective.
Yeah, exact, I mean, we would, exactly, it has to be, after the budget gets set.
It can't be for this.
And can't be in effect until the following academic year. Because it impacts budget.
So let's move on to discussion. Can we at least approve it for first read?
We were on second.
Second read, that's what I meant.
Going backwards now?
I meant second, I just said first. All those in favor?
What happens when I miss a meeting?
Okay, great. And then the last one is JICK. JICK, policy JICK, which is, I'm going to have to ask somebody to make, is this a first read? So can, I need a motion for first read for JICK, people's safety and violence prevention, bullying.
Is this a new policy for us?
No.
Oh, right, I got it.
Can you make a motion? Liz, Liz motions. Chris has seconded. I'm going to let some other people from the policy committee kind of talk, speak to this, and then, all of you know that Beth kind of handed out a, a little amendment that she'd like to see. Again, this is first read, so we're going to go through it and then we're going to come back, we'll bring it back to policy, so we just like some initial feedback.
Yeah, no, I have a few.
Just initial feedback, we don't want to spend too, too long on that. And then, any other additional feedback? We are happy to receive emails. The policy committee loves your emails. Don't we, all?
We love them.
We love emails.
We love it.
And texts.
I have a couple of questions. Section 11, investigative procedures, I, part four, there's just something really awkward about the sentence that begins with however, I'm not sure what it's trying to say.
11 for four?
Section 11?
11 for.
Consistent with applicable law?
The numbers. No, the sentence starting with however.
However?
However, the district or may request to a student. Is it make a request or is it request that a student? I'm not sure what it's trying to say there. So.
Oh.
Is it, is it missing a word or?
I know. Here we go, 11.
And the numbers are off, yes.
However.
We do need to change the numbers.
Are they?
Yeah, there's two fours.
Yeah, we, we actually have nine in section 11, but we, we have two fours.
Okay, and then, yeah, it's the first four. And then in 11.7, you eliminated, in the last sentence, you eliminated the word and, and I think it still needs to be there.
Correct.
Mm-hmm. Anything else?
Um, no, I need to comprehend what Beth is, which is your change?
So mine, I just printed the change part, so I didn't print the whole thing. It's, I think it's page three, it's under parents. And I just, the way it reads, if you look at the current copy, the final sentence before 1, 2, 3, 4, says they will also be told, we're talking about the parents, they will also be told that to help prevent bullying at, at school, they should encourage their children to. And report bullying when it occurs makes sense, but you can't encourage your children to take the advantage, take advantage of opportunities to talk to their children about bullying. And number three also didn't make sense because it's talking about their child, so. So I just was suggesting we take out encourage their child and just put it together so it fit better, if that makes sense. So two of the bullet points made sense with that, that sentence saying encourage their children to, but two of them did not. But all four are, were important and they apply to the parent, so I just tried to rework that. So it made sense.
A comment, and I don't know how to fix it, so here's just something maybe the policy committee can think about. When it says, inform the school, under that parent section, if I'm not an experienced parent or one that's really integrated into this, into this school culture, I'm not sure I would know what that means, inform the school. And if my child comes home and somebody was calling him or her names, I might not feel like that's something that I should pick up the phone and call the principal for. And so consequently, I might not contact anybody because that seems like overkill to call Rick to talk about some name-calling. But do we have like, a point person who's supposed to be sort of the one who fields those calls? And maybe we need that point person. So it's, doesn't make somebody feel like they have to call the principal because there's something going on and they don't really know exactly what's the full extent of it.
School counselor?
What? I'm not sure if, I'm not, I don't know, and maybe it's not just one person. I don't have an answer to it. It's just, as I'm sitting here thinking as a parent, like, who is that, who is that type of person that we want them to call?
And we let that in the policy. It doesn't answer.
But maybe, because isn't that who people were, I mean, and maybe that needs to be.
I was thinking that's in a handbook, that's.
I was just going to look.
Is it in a handbook? Like, if I, if my kid comes home and says they're being called names and they're being bullied, do I know who, by, based upon the handbook, who to call?
Just before that, thank you, just before that sentence, so you're talking about, it says, parents will be informed of the process and the means of student. So that's in that first paragraph, but that was one question I had, is how exactly are they being informed? So it says in this first paragraph, before you get there, we're going to tell you how to go about the process.
So maybe part of the policy needs to pull up, the, the policy committee needs to pull up the handbook and make sure that they coordinate well.
That's something we can do.
And that was on our list. Okay, thank you. Never mind.
But I do have a question about Beth's amendment, because it's unclear to me what the intent of that paragraph is. Is it to encourage the parents to report bullying or the parents to tell their children to report bullying? I read the policy as saying the parents should be reporting it, not the children.
I think the intention was probably both, that if they're aware of it. But they should encourage their children to as well.
Right, and I think it's.
But I, I thought that they wanted, because there's the instance where, where.
It's not a great paragraph.
No, it's not.
If a parent, if a, if a parent believes that bullying is occurring based on what the child has told them or what they have seen.
Right.
Does the parent instruct the child to report it or does the parent report it directly? What's, what is desired?
I, I think we need to just take a look at that, that paragraph related to our student handbook, see if we're actually providing a copy of this policy to our, to our parents annually, make sure that it's being, it's part of the handbook. We need to, we need to work on this, is basically what we need to do.
Yeah, we need to work on it. We also, this is also a policy that is consistent amongst our three districts, so we, and it is, has, was developed when the law came out with some changes as the law has evolved. But there was a strong need to educate staff, students and families about the law and the implications of it, so that, I think that's why it's so detailed about parents, you need to know this, parents encourage your child. You know, so, but I don't necessarily want to only put the onus on parents saying to the child, you should report this, because then, then procedurally, things change. I, I think sometimes it's okay for a parent to kind of put something out there and then you investigate and you speak to who needs to be spoken to. Some kids are going to be ready and able to advocate at different ages and stages. So I, I don't necessarily want to say there's only one method.
No, I just, I mean, within the, within the scope of this paragraph.
No, it's not a great paragraph.
Decision of what power of wording should best be expressed, but I think this is just meant as proof of.
Yeah, no, we, I mean, it's a big policy, there's a lot of detail, and we need to like, take a look at it, look at it again, compare it to student handbooks, make sure that we have both referenced in the middle school and do some cross-referencing and that kind of work. So that's why we bring it to you, get the feedback. Is there anything else?
Just in the grand scheme of things, we just got the email from NHSBA that the new guidelines are there?
So Jean and I spent today going through sets of guidelines and we have a significant list.
Is there one of these? I mean, is, do they have this policy in there?
Chick is not on there. It's from last fall.
Oh, okay.
So we have some work to do. We have a list of policies to go through. And, you know, let's, can we just approve this for first read and then I'll have a comment about policy in general? All those in favor?
Sorry, I just have one comment.
This was this discussion. Don't get down.
No, I'm not down. That's all those five, zero.
It's never been good.
No, just for, if you have some time, if you take a look at the Hollis School Board agenda, you'll see that they're attacking policies with a little bit of a memo system where they're listing numerous policies and approving them to get through sort of the backlog of policies. So if you'd like to do a little research on your own and just kind of check that out, it might be something that the policy committee might want to try to do so that we can get through more policies more quickly. And that would require all of us to do a little bit more work offline and some communicating so that we don't.
Have you decided individually to people to, to, so essentially everyone's on the policy committee?
So it's a memo, yeah. Well, no, I mean, you're, you're all on policy committee anyway because you give feedback, but the policy committee has, it's a memo system. I don't really know how to describe it, I'm sorry, I'm not prepared, but.
Your problem with this board is there's two people who are not on the policy committee who are very.
Who want to be.
Oh, no, no, I know, I said my students. But.
It's not a problem, it's a really great resource and I appreciate, we really do appreciate the feedback. But we're getting through maybe three, four, five policies a month and we are backlogged by.
A year.
A year, right, right.
I mean, and we've talked about doing like a workshop or something and then it just never happens, but.
So instead of doing a workshop, the Hollis School Board is attacking it through this system of like, a memo where they have a list of policies and I, Jean might be able to speak. It's in their agenda.
Yeah, it's the same place that you could find our agenda packets, theirs. I'll show you. I'll send you a link. But the, basically, the, the policy memo just sort of separates, these are for third